Required fire flows in that southeast corner. So those are some of the reasons for them sending this back. You could, if you felt strongly about your recommendation, simply resubmit that with no change, or you could modify your recommendation, or you could postpone consideration of this item to allow additional time for an alternative plan to be prepared and reviewed by this body. We would recommend alternative three because we think that any recommendation should be based on review of a revised plan that you've had an opportunity to weigh versus the other location. So this is a public hearing, and we should hear input from the applicant and his representative. But we think without an alternative plan, it would be maybe premature to submit another recommendation back. But you do have that option if you feel strongly about your original one. The ultimate decision lies with the governing body as to where that would take place.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Any questions of Dean or other staff? Well, hearing none, we'll hear from the developer, what his reactions are.
I'm Darvin Dent, Earl Salina. We were, I don't know how many times we've been here talking to you about this, how many times we hashed over where we were going to go with the multifamily. In the original master plan, this entire area was, they were showing commercial on the corner and townhomes on the remainder of the property there. Well, if you look at that, as far as the densities go, had we been multi, or townhomes, we'd put 14 units per acre. And if you'd leave out, and just calculated on 30 acres, the balance being for deduction base, and we could have put 420 units on the property. What we've come to you with is 60 units, single-family, and then we limited it on the R. 2.2 to where we have 115 units. We've got a total of 175 units going on the property versus the 420 that we could have put on there had we zoned it according to the master plan that had been prepared. At this point in time, we don't have any really intentions of trying to move the multifamily or the R. 2.5 to the corner. One of the reasons being is this is long-range plan. We don't know that that's actually going to happen and become apartment houses. We don't want to go to the corner, have to put in all the infrastructure and wait 10 years, 15 years, who knows how long before we'd put any apartment houses in there. Another thing is, who's to say that Mr. Welch, he's going to go for a light commercial on the corner of Holmes Road and Crawford? There's nothing saying that in some point in time, Mr. Welch may rezone that, go back to residential. So as far as trying to plan ahead of what is being done on the other side, I just don't see that that's anything that we need to look at at this point in time. Our density is lower than what we could have put on it. As far as Dean was talking about the water, the water is actually going to be looped entirely through the subdivision. It'll come down Crawford Street, come through our subdivision, come back up to Brookwood, tie into a line that's on the north side of Holmes Road. We're not going to have debt in line. We're not going to be short on fire flows. That can be looked at at the time that we're doing our engineering, make sure the lines are big enough to supply the amount of water that would be needed for what we're doing. I just assume that you make, we just stay with the plan we've got. I really don't want to spend the time and the money to redesign this, to possibly move the multifamily to the corner, because this is the way we are looking at doing it. This is the way we want to do it. I think it's the most logical way to do it. The cost is just too great to change the plan now. We went through it this far. We've hashed it over, I don't know how many times. So I just assume, send it back to the city commission, and I would like to state that at city commission meeting, I wasn't able to be there. I didn't get my packet that I was going to, the city commission meeting, I wasn't there to represent myself. Had I been there, I think I probably wouldn't have come back to you. I received my packet for that commission meeting. It was post-dated, March the 9th. The meeting was on the 9th. It's awful hard for me to get to a meeting, not knowing that I was on the agenda for that meeting, March the 9th. I received it either on the 10th or the 11th. So I'd just like to see you send it back to the city commission, may get notice soon enough that I could be there to represent myself and tell them why we're doing it this way, and I don't think it'd come back to you.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Dent?
I guess I have one. Are you prepared for the, if they send it back again, or if they defeat it?
We might just sit on it until we get a different commission.
Yeah.
Well, it's a couple of days away, isn't it? Yeah.
The new commission's seated.
13th?
They will seat at the end of the 13th. Their first official meeting will be the 20th.
Of April.
Yes.
Yes.
If the city does grow that, which is some home, what would happen if you were on that southwest corner of that property? Would you ever come back? Could you see, coming back to the committee, I'd like to be zoning that commercial so we could put a gas station? Because that would be a logical point for the kind of services that you have, either on that side of the road.
Mr. Welch has probably got the best location for something like that. Because of the contour of the land, what he has would work out a lot better for a situation like that than what we have on our side, if that were to happen. Who's to say that Todd won't get it zoned commercial now and come back and do something else with it later?
No.
I have no intentions of coming back and going commercial on the corner.
Other than the expense and the time involved in redesigning this, would you review for us why you didn't place the commercial, the more dense residential at the intersection?
One of the things is the timing. We have no idea when it will happen or if it will happen. And if we do it now, if we would move that up there, we're going to have to put in a lot more infrastructure and go around that piece of property before we can develop the single-family residential.
From a phasing standpoint, what do you envision developing first in that?
Well, it'd be the corner on Holmes and Crawford. I mean, we would start there in that area and work in, and then, of course, it'd just have to flow back around. And then, at some point in time, it would have to tie back into Holmes Road.
In other words, you'd start to develop along Holmes Road?
No, actually, we would start along Crawford, because our entrance is in off of Crawford. So we would start off Crawford.
That Wheatland Drive, or?
Right.
Yeah.
And we would work north.
Well, I don't see a problem. I mean, I know, we're much smarter than the city commission, so if we made this decision, how could we be wrong?
Yeah.
I tend to err on your side. This is what you do. You know what your costs are. We deal with this from time to time, but you're the expert.
We'd just have to reconfigure the entire thing. We'd just throw out what we've done. The amount of hours and time and engineering that's been done to this point is just, it's out the window.
Right. I agree. And like you said, you may come back and change your mind on this density. You may decide, hey, that's not our best interest.
Eventually, that may come back and just go in as townhomes or even single-family. We don't know at this point in time.
Mm-hmm.
That'd take up a pretty large area, that Holmes-Crawford corner, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah, it would.
Because you've got how many acres in this?
We've got, oh, a little over seven acres, seven and a half acres in that, in the R. 2.5.
Dean, about what's the density difference between the 115 units over 7.21 acres versus the rest of the subdivision approximately? What kind of difference in density are we talking about?
Well, we were talking about, if you were just looking at the single-family homes at the density that he had, it was between two and three units an acre for just the single-family. And as a rule of thumb, for modest-sized lots, single-family, four units an acre is considered low-density. So he was below that for the single-family portion. And then, when you roll the 115 units into that, it wasn't, it didn't really spike it too much because it's your, as he noted, you're having 175 units that you're dividing over 36.15 acres.
Well, actually, 32.58. That's actually developable, so our density is 5.37. The way we have, the way we're asking for it right now, the way we have it laid out right now, and what you had proved at previous meeting.
And the block one, Lot 18, the density was not to exceed, what was that, 10 or?
115, I believe was right. 114 or 115.
Well, that's...
16, something like that.
Per acre, yeah.
16 units per acre on the multifamily portion.
Right.
Which is quite a bit more.
Could we see the aerial view? I'm trying to see what the implications are for development on east of here. Dry Creek comes down, and is that?
There won't be, I don't see any development being done to the east of Dry Creek for quite some distance. I would say you're probably going to have to get into the area where the cemetery is before you see any more development in that area, possibly.
How big an area does that cemetery cover? Does that cover up to Dry Creek?
No, it does not.
Does not go that far?
Block, this block one, Lot 19, that's what I thought, too. So they're wanting this area moved up to here, or over here, really. And like I said, you know, they're kind of forcing the guys.
It's going to be quite some distance.
He doesn't even do that. Bullshit. How would you like to be in those shoes?
Well, my point is, if you move this over here, and he has to build this, and he has to put all this infrastructure here, and shit he's never going to use.
And that's owned by?
I believe Mr. Allen. Right, correct.
Which Allen would that be?
Bart Allen.
Bart Allen.
Oh, oh.
Does that flood?
This piece of property right down in here, if you're going to be low enough in here, this will probably never be developed in this area.
Well, we've learned that never comes sooner than you ever thought.
It's going to take tremendous amount of fill in order to make that where it's going to be developed.
But yours is going to be so popular that it's going to pull people there.
Sure.
Make a nice park.
City planning standpoint, since the East Salina master plan calls for that corner that we're talking about, southwest corner, to be retail commercial, you have to question when we deviate from a master plan that the cities put together, and I assume that was all considered, that was before I got involved with this, but I assume that was all considered, that the master plan no longer needs to consider that corner as retail commercial when they decided to move this forward. Is that right?
Well, what the message is saying is that, and this has been a consistent message from the planning commission and city commission since dating back to 1989, is that they did not want to see East Crawford strip out commercially from Marymount East. So the consistent position has been that if you're going to have commercial on East Crawford, it should be concentrated at Marymount and Crawford, and at Holmes and Crawford. It doesn't mean that all four corners of Holmes and Crawford have to be commercial. It just says if you're looking at having some neighborhood commercial or some higher density, and John, I don't know if you can minimize that and go to the master plan or not. But that...
The idea was that you would, this is a church here, Presbyterian Manor, that you would have, if you're going to have offices or neighborhood business, that you would concentrate it at the intersection and then transition back away from that. And just, I can't speak for them, but in looking at the way that the city commission looked at that, they looked at the apartments as being somewhat comparable to the red area that's shown there on the plan, and they wanted to know, they think it needed to be considered, that that be moved from the southeast corner to the southwest corner as it was in their intensification of uses more like the neighborhood business or office development.
One thing I'd like to point out here, too, is that this property has a lot of difference in contour. There's like 25-foot of fall from Holmes Road to the south end of the property, which is going to make it very hard to build apartment complexes or a retail service commercial on property that has that kind of a contour to it, especially for parking lots or for buildings of any size. It's going to make it very difficult.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody will complain if it's less commercial up there. Well, it's definitely not the residents, that's for sure. And what's, the city's going to grow eventually, and if Simpson Road becomes that commercial hub, Simpson and Crawford, that might even be better. I mean, it may be better if Todd does come back, and, you know, commercial will be fine there, but if he comes back and changes the residential, I don't think there'd be any complaints, like I said, from anybody living up there.
Yeah.
I kind of have an issue with, we didn't even discuss this before, this master plan. We've looked at this for two months, three months with Darvin. We gave him the approval. I think we made that commitment once. I think we need to continue with it.
I would agree.
There are three other, there are three other corners there that could still be developed commercially. Just leave that one out.
You know, one of the things that I've always had a problem with this master plan that they came up with here is, there was no consideration taken that they're dealing with multiple ownerships of property here, and lay out the streets and the configuration they did, and in order to make it work the way they put this plan together, there's going to have to be a consensus amongst one, two, three, four, four different property owners in order to make it work the way it's working right now at this time, without the city going in and saying it has to be done, or eminent domain, or whatever, to put the streets in, the configuration that they've come up with here.
I agree.
I mean, it's a great plan, looks good on paper, but as far as will it ever work, I really doubt it.
I guess I don't understand how we got to where we are. I think it's regrettable that it's come back and all of the time and planning and expense. Why was this, why was this not caught before this point?
What do you refer to as caught?
Well, I don't know. First, let me ask, how does staff feel about this?
Well, staff feels that the, that location is, because of the two arterial streets, is a suitable location, and it was, as Darvin indicated, it was shown as townhomes on, in other words, if you look at East Crawford farther to the west, the pattern is you have sterling house and apartments and townhomes along the corridor, then as you work your way away from the arterial, the density gets less. What he was arguing for was to package up all those townhomes and put them into an apartment complex. If you're going to have apartments, they should be on the arterial frontage, which Crawford is. Our concern, which we've experienced before, and maybe having lived through Golden Eagle, where we probably looked at four, five, six different water models of trying to somehow project that putting the apartments at the dead end of the very edge of the city's distribution system, that you were somehow going to get the kind of fire flows that you are going to require for multi-story wood frame apartments or things of that. The concern for us in that case, and in any case like this, is that you go through this, you look at it from a land use standpoint, somebody comes in at the building stage, and you say, oh, well, the fire department's concluded that you need 4,500 gallons a minute fire flow for this type of construction. And then the question comes back, so how did that get approved in that location if everybody knew that you needed more intense fire flows for apartments? Our concern about the southwest location has more to do with, are we going to end up down the road being at the far edge of the city in our distribution system and have enough water to build that type of development? And so that, this was reviewed in accordance with the East Salina master plan and every staff report that went to you. So this was included in that packet. So it's not, what I think occurred is, again, the steady session occurred on an update on the concepts that were important in the new comprehensive plan. One of those concepts was looking at the preferred locations for higher-density housing, and one of those locational criteria was at intersections of arterial streets. So in their case, they said, well, why, why is it not feasible to put these apartments there at the corner? I think you've heard that from the developer's perspective, that he doesn't think it's feasible. That doesn't mean that from a long-range planning standpoint, it's not the best place. But again, the decision, if they feel strongly that that's the only place they'll accept apartments, that's their decision to make.
And if they go counter to our recommendation, the vote has to be?
They, the second time they get it, it just simply has to be a majority.
Okay.
The way the process works is if they had disagreed and wanted to just deny the apartments in the southeast corner, they would have needed four votes out of five to do that. But one option they have is to send it back and have it looked at to see what the feasibility is of locating them on the intersection corner.
Dean, you keep saying you're looking at the new comprehensive plan. Are you looking at the comprehensive plan, the newest one we have, or are you looking at the comprehensive plan that was in place when we first started working on this project?
This is the comprehensive plan that isn't currently in place. The East Salina master plan is the comprehensive, but there's been an ongoing effort to complete the update of that, which is going to result in some fundamental changes from the current plan. That has not been adopted, but nonetheless, it's in everybody's mind as they look at these things, is the concepts that are being enforced and reinforced in the updated comprehensive plan.
So that's what they're looking at, and that's what they're working from, is the updated comprehensive plan?
I think that influenced their perspective.
I don't think that should have any influence on this, because we're not working from that.
Right, but that's something you need to tell the city commission.
Yeah. I have the chance, I will.
Yeah. But I can understand your point. I mean, you, there was a plan laid out for you. You thought you were following it. You did it, and all of a sudden, it's like, hey, we're going to slightly change this. Sorry, Darvin, you've got this money, it's throwing down the drain. I agree. I think you're influential enough. I think that if we send it back up to them, I think you, given the opportunity to talk, could hopefully talk some sense into them. Let's also keep in mind, this is the same new comprehensive plan that wanted to reroute 9th Street down Santa Fe, so I'm not 100% in support of what these guys have come up with either. So it doesn't, just because it's a plan, doesn't mean we have to follow it. It's just a general conception of what Salina should do.
I'd like to, Pete, would you want to address them on the water situation here?
I'm Pete Earls with Earls Engineering. As we lay this out, like Darvin said, there's 25 feet of difference in elevation. As you know, the tower is up on Markley. The, there's a 12-inch water line that's going to come down Crawford. That 12-inch water line's going to continue down Holmes Road. 8-inch water line will go around Todd Welch's property to the north and tie back into the 8-inch water line, which currently loops around Presbyterian Manor. So my point is, water flow is there. Volume will be there. And on top of, when you drop 25 feet, I also have another 10 pounds of pressure at the lower side than what I have up at the intersection. So I think that when we do run these, the volume will be there for the water and the water pressure. The biggest problem we usually had is, like Dean said, we've, Golden Eagle is an example, where there wasn't any large water lines, except up on Ohio Street. There was no elevation difference at all, and we had a heck of a time trying to get flow all the way from whatever that road is on the east, on south.
Yeah, from Magnolia up north.
All the way back to their property, and then it installed all 6-inch lines. So we just couldn't get any volume through, when you're running a 3/4 of a mile, a 6-inch line, trying to run 1,500 pounds, or 1,500 gallons a minute through it, you use up all your pressure with friction loss. And that's not going to be the case here, because we've got a lot larger lines.
Is 8-inch the minimum size line you'll have in this subdivision?
Well, we'll bring an 8-inch line down to the PUD area and loop it back up through the subdivision. We will have 6-inch lines feeding some of the subdivision internally, but we'll have an 8-inch loop.
8-inch loop.
Right.
Which should provide you plenty of water.
And that's purely for that PUD area. That's correct.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Earls? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, if the concern is about the water flow, could we put an addendum on there that basically said, listen, you know, we'll approve this now. We agree, you don't want to lose any money. If you do this planned development later on, and you can't prove to us that you can have the right amount of flow, we're just not going to let you build it. I mean, is there, it's a little risk on his part.
What occurs in a planned development district, and we don't know if it's going to be three years, five years, seven years, the, this is a preliminary plan. This is setting out the parameters for what, how much multifamily, in terms of ultimately how many buildings and how many stories they are, and buffers from nearby single-family. That's going to be determined when a final development plan comes back to you. If, at that time, much of the infrastructure is established in the rest of the subdivision, then you'll have some reasonably reliable information to go off of as to what that is, what that is producing. But the, we have, when you get away from the arterial streets where you have the direct connection, we have, we have run into surprises before when, when the fire department says, well, if you're doing multi-story wood frame construction, this is what flows you need to have, or the buildings need to be sprinkled, and then, then you start looking at those options. So we're simply, we brought it up the first time, and that, the remoteness of the site, it is on Crawford as far as having arterial street frontage, and so it will serve as a buffer in terms of what comes in behind it. The other point was that you had the creek and open space on the east, so there's going to be a buffer there. But our primary concern was, this is the far end of the city's distribution system, and you don't like to have, just as a, as a history lesson, which wasn't allowed to remain for long, but the fire department used to station a truck at Presbyterian Manor because we had a water line going down East Crawford that dead-ended, and one simple break in that line, and Presbyterian Manor had no water and no fire protection. So when you get to the edge of the city and the edge of the system, and you don't have loops, then that's where you can run into challenges. It's two issues. One is, are you going to be out of water completely, or are you going to have not enough water to put out a fire? So that, that was the primary concern there.
Have we made exceptions in the past when the fire department has said, there's not enough water pressure here? And has the planning commission said, well, let's make an exception here?
You don't have the authority to make that exception. That's governed by the fire code.
Insurance rates go out, it'll skyrocket.
Right. So I guess I'm not quite understanding.
As we get into the next cases here, we'll give you examples of that. But if all we had was a water line coming down Crawford Street, the first... But if all we had was a water line coming down Crawford Street, the First Christian Church and the Pheasant Ridge Edition would not be there today.
Let's resolve this one and then move on. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? If not, I guess I don't see any action from this group. Do you, Dean?
No, you have...
This is all up to Mr. Dent as to whether he wants to proceed with the recommendation.
You are obliged to make a recommendation.
What's that?
You are obliged to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Your options are, your options are on page four there, with, without, without reviewing any alternate plan, you could simply, as we indicated there, you could say, we're going to resubmit the same recommendation we did in February. You could say, we, we see your point, we see the, the issues you've identified, and you could modify your recommendation to say that you now support the multifamily being moved to the southwest corner, or with the consent of the application, applicant, if they wanted additional time to present you with an alternate plan, which they've indicated they do not, you could have postponed this and allowed them to work on an alternate plan that showed apartments at the southwest corner for you to review. But you've got, you've got to do one of those three things.
I have one more question for Mr. Dent. If, in fact, you did look at putting the apartment complex or the multifamily housing on that corner, would it be faced inward like what the homes are in that corner?
I have no clue. We haven't even looked at that. One of, one of the big reasons is because of the difference in the contour, when you ride off of, of Holmes Road is, there's a drastic drop in elevations there, which is not going to make it an easy task to build, or any type of, an apartment building on, on that property.
I, I guess in, in my mind, I, I don't see what the, the City Commission's, how they're equating commercial to, to, to townhomes there, because, in other words, as Mr. Stack I'm sure will tell us, that the, the commercial needs access off of those corners, and I, and I would guess that you might do a townhome having access off of the interior of the place. And I guess in that, in that respect, I don't see any difference of having homes there versus townhomes, so.
Right.
I mean, it's probably a little bit heavier traffic flow, but I mean, but...
Interior-wise, but, yeah. But I guess from the, from the look of a, a commercial versus townhomes there, I, I don't see that as being on an equal playing field at all.
No, I think the City Commission is asking for higher density, which provides higher traffic flows to me move towards the intersection or through arterial...
So they're going, so they're going, they're just going to try and get more of their flow closer to the intersection, which I don't think's good.
We'd look at keeping that same entrance, the same place it is. I mean, there's no reason to...
And there would be access too. That was one of, one of the items that we discussed when this was approved, that there'd have to be access for the, the R-2.5 off of Crawford also, where we're going to be getting that access farther away from the intersection of Homes and Crawford. Now, we move it up to, to the other end, you're just going to, you're going to have, you know, the traffic's going to be more dense closer to the intersection, if you move it to the corner.
But you'd probably have some access onto Holmes Road also.
Possibly.
Also. I think that would be part of the logic.
There's about ten feet of fall in the first five hundred feet east of Crawford, or east of Homes, basically. I mean, it's...
It drops off pretty quick there.
Yeah. I don't know how, how wide a planned development, I don't know how much of the, of the higher density, how far you want to go.
Well, it's, it's almost, it's almost half the length of the property, and I don't recall what the total length of that property was now.
Okay. And then Wayne, we were talking about the pressure zones. There's actually a reduced pressure zone in this area. I mean, this is seventy feet below the base of the water tower, plus the water tower height. I mean, it'd blow the, it'd blow the water pipes out if we did exactly what, what was talked about here. So there, there is a lot more going on here than just, I mean, we're twenty-five feet below, and we've, so there's, there's a lot more that we'll have to look at as well on the fire flows issue. So I guess I just want to qualify what Pete said a little bit, especially on the size of the water lines too. We wouldn't, we've got a trunk line on Crawford. We're not going to put an eight-inch line on Crawford to end our development there. We'd have to look at a, possibly, twelve is what's currently going that way, and then look at the, the flows in that direction. So those are some of the things too, that we'd have to work out with, with water, water flow. So that muddies the waters more, but I just have to qualify what they've, what they've talked about.
Well, doesn't that have to be looked at as far as any future development to the east? You want to do that for that reason also?
That's correct. So, yeah, we just can't say we're going to put an eight-inch water line around your entire project, because it's, I mean, we've got to look at further expansion, basically.
But any, but, but for, as far as our interior though?
Yes. But along Crawford though, there will have to be a trunk line.
Right. At some other, at some other point in time. Wouldn't have to be done when this project goes in. I mean, it's going to have to come down probably to at least the corner of, of Homes and, and Crawford.
At least. That's correct.
So that we can get the eight-inch into our property, and then loop it on around with the six or whatever we need to, to loop back into Brookwood.
Yeah, I mean, at the preliminary stages, again, this, this is just, have to be looked at, basically. The fire flows will definitely have to be considered here.
Any more comments from the, anyone? Bring it to the bench. What action would you like to take?
I would like to make a motion that we resubmit this to the City Commission and let Mr. Dent plead his case with them.
Second.
Second.
Heard that motion, and there's a second. Any question about that? Any discussion?
If I may, I'd like to mention here in discussion that the dilemma we seem to face here is the fact that some time ago, the city proposed a comprehensive master plan. And then somewhere along the way, that might not have, or it was considered, and either it was given endorsement to change from that master plan, or we've made an exception. That was before I was involved. I, and, and I think it's a little late now to reverse our recommendation. I really believe that.
Mm-hmm.
But I hope in the future that we'll really look at our master plan, because that's the purpose of it, and it goes through quite a bit of study, to develop a master plan that will benefit the city for hundreds of years. Housing will be there well past most of us, so it's irreversible once the houses go in. So I, I think it's, we're beyond sending, I mean, reconsidering it, but, and it does change the master plan, but I agree, we've already made a recommendation, you've done a lot of planning, and I think we support that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments?
So you're not just saying, we're not just telling the commission, yes, we're saying heck yes. Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's unfortunate that we're here.
I agree.
We spent forty-five minutes, we wouldn't have had two.
I think we all feel that way, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Eight, eight zero.
Obviously, the City Commission doesn't have to have the developer present when they're talking about an...
Well, it's not a public hearing when it gets to the City Commission. It is, it is, they're reviewing your minutes and your, your recommendation is what they're reviewing, but obviously, at any time, they're going to welcome input from the applicant or anyone else. It's just not a full public hearing in front of the City Commission.
Okay. Item number three, application number Z-09-2 filed by Todd Welch, requesting a change in zoning, district classification from Saline County AG Agricultural to R-1 Single Family Residential, on a 7.26 acre tract located at the north end of Quail Hollow Drive and Prairie Lane, east of Presbyterian Manor. This too is a public hearing, and we'll have a report from Dean.
Okay. Well, I just, there's, there seems to be some confusion still out there, so I'll, I'll try to clarify again. We had a 1992 citywide comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan was amended, and the East Salina Master Plan was adopted as a more detailed plan for this area. So there's not three plans out there, there's two. The East Salina Master Plan is the existing comprehensive plan for this area. The comprehensive plan update that's been discussed and which you've had study sessions on is not adopted yet, but is, is still in the discussion and refinement stage, and we'll eventually get to you. But when we're reviewing applications, we're reviewing them according to the current comprehensive plan. And so from, from the day that these applications were filed, they were reviewed for consistency with the East Salina Master Plan, which is the comprehensive plan for this area. So just, there seemed to be some discussion that some other plan had materialized since our previous meetings, and that is not the case. This is an application for rezoning of, of property, and before we get into that, Mr. Dent's comment was, was well taken on the, the, the number of property owners that we have and, and the smaller tracts. And so I did, I wanted to point out something that is probably one of the worst words that planners get to hear, and that is lot splits. And we'll, we'll explain something that is, that is not legal, but yet can't be enforced till somebody tries to build. But there, there is a state law. The state law says, if I'm the Lundberg Trust and I own this forty acres here, I can do one sell-off, one time into one other piece without plating. Anything beyond that is not legal. But what has occurred here is that we've had one, two, three, four splits of that property before any kind of plating or planting or anything could occur. So the reason that planners dislike that so much is the planners get to be the ones that tell the people that they, it's legal to prepare a deed, it's legal to record a deed, it's not legal to use or develop the property that was split illegally. So it would be, it would be great if we had a law that says you can't record a deed that illegally splits a lot, but we don't. It's, it's enforced when somebody comes in and says, I want to do something or build something on this piece that I have over in the corner. And the answer's going to be, you can't build on that because it was not created legally. So the way to, the way to legally divide this forty acres into four pieces is to submit a plat for the Planning Commission's review. That did not happen here, so we've got, we've got four owners, and we've got four splits, and by the time it gets to us and gets to you, we're dealing with those hands of, that's the cards that have been dealt, is these divisions have already been made. And so a lot of what is going to be discussed that relates to these applications is because we're now in a situation where this forty acres should have been platted and planned for all at once and not in four pieces. And so that's, that's why some of the comments from neighboring property owners and some of the things that will, will come up here, come into play. So that the application that before you specifically is to rezone this piece of property from A-1, which is agricultural, to R-1. And the, the previous comprehensive plan, the current East Salina Master Plan shows this piece is appropriate for single-family residential development. So we don't think there's, there's a lot of issues or things to go through from a land use standpoint as far as what the appropriate zoning for this property is. The property directly to the south, which is platted as the Pheasant Ridge Edition, is currently zoned R-1, so this would be compatible with that application. So we will, we will touch on, these two applications are going to merge into each other from the standpoint of street access and design. So John, if you could go back to the master plan, we'll, we'll start there. This is Prairie Lane. This is Quail Hollow Drive. There, there were two different concepts. One had Quail Hollow Drive coming up this way, and either extending to Brookwood Extended, or coming back, basically making a horseshoe. And the plan was that Prairie Lane would be the street that would be the primary entrance into the subdivision. It provides direct access to the church, and therefore, it was the primary access point. Because of the splits that have occurred, the First Christian Church owns that piece directly to the north. That would be in this area here. So if, if you were to attempt, Mr. Welch could plat this street, and he could run it straight north. And then he would have church property on the east side and housing on the west side. But if he attempted to create a benefit district to pay for that street, the church could block it, because he needs more than fifty-one percent of the total ownership to be supportive of the benefit district. So the church is not interested in paying for half a street with nothing on it, so they could have essentially blocked any use of that property for a long, long time as far as extending Prairie Lane. So Mr. Welch and his design engineer came up with an alternate plan, which eliminates the extension of Prairie Lane, and simply has the Quail Hollow Drive extending from the south and, and going up to Brookwood Lane. So that, that is the origin of that plan. And so the, the reasoning for that is that the, the church was basically in a position where they could prevent anything from happening with Prairie Lane unless Mr. Welch wanted to pay for Prairie Lane by himself. And it's, it's generally not very efficient to have a pay for a full street and have housing on one side of it. So that, that is the origin of, of the plan, and that is, that is the deviation from the master plan, is that we do not have a plan for extension of Prairie Lane. The other thing that comes into play here is that there's a pump station, that, it's a sewer pump station at the end of Quail Hollow Drive, that was put in and, and sized solely to serve the houses in Pheasant Ridge Edition. And so the idea is that someday that would be disposable. And that means that the, the sewer service, and I don't know if you could click on, on utilities, John, particularly water and sewer. So there's a pump station right here that discharges down here and all the way back to Markley Road. It's, it's a very inefficient way to do a subdivision, and it's why we have a lot more sewer pump stations in Salina than we probably need. But if, if they wanted to develop right now, they did not want to wait, and the only way to do that was to, to set it up this way. What's going to happen is that this will go away, and all of this will come up here, go across here, come back down through here, and go through Mr. Dent's subdivision to get over to the interceptor. So that's, all of these property owners have to kind of work in concert with each other to do that. So the, I guess the flip side to Mr. Dent's comment is that sometimes it really is... So, the, I guess, the flip side to Mr. Dent's comment is that sometimes it really is necessary and most beneficial for different landowners to work together to make a plan work. And it is gonna be necessary for these owners, and fortunately, they have Mr. Earl's working on all the design, but there is gonna have to be some coordination between them to make that work. But sometimes, you as a commission and we as a staff are handed what we're handed in terms of the, and it wasn't Mr. Welsh's fault because it was already divided up that way. But when you're dealing with a situation of having this 40 acres split up into all these different ownerships, it does make it more difficult to do good planning. So, those are the two primary issues with developing this particular piece of property, is that the sewer service has to go all the way back to the east to the interceptor, which means that this is gonna be developing later, not sooner. It's dependent on what happens to the east. And then, we wanted to explain what the rationale was for why Quail Hollow Drive is now the primary means of access into the subdivision instead of Prairie Lane. The church simply could've continued to block Prairie Lane. And if you're looking at this long-term and ideally, and maybe ideally that Prairie Lane should be extended, but it's not, it's not under anybody's control right now because this 40 acres got chopped up into four pieces. And so, from a compatibility standpoint, the R1 zoning, Mr. Welsh is requesting, I think, is compatible with what's to the south. This would be an extension of what is currently planned and existing in the Pheasant Ridge Edition. So, we think the R1 zoning is compatible with the surrounding area and with the anticipated development plan in this area. So, with that, I'd be open for any questions about the R1 zoning application.
Okay. Any questions, Dean, on the zoning issue?
So, the single deviation from the East Salina Master Plan is that Prairie Lane does not go through to Brookwood.
Yes, and we have received a number of phone calls from residents or property owners on Quail Hollow Lane, expressing concern about the fact that the sole or primary access into the subdivision is gonna be Quail Hollow Lane, and they think it ought to be Prairie Lane. So, we've done our best to explain why an extension of Prairie Lane is not part of Mr. Welsh's layout.
On the overview, on the aerial view, it looks like Prairie Lane changes in width. I haven't really driven up there, I guess.
Well, here's, I've had the fortune or misfortune, depending on the way you look at it, this of working on Pheasant Ridge Edition. When they came in and platted this, the original boundary was right here. And then, they decided that the depth of these lots was gonna be too shallow, and so, they came in and they added 17 feet there. And so, those lots got 17 feet deeper, but the rest of the subdivision did not change.
I'm talking about the road that goes up after you access, after you go into the church, as the road goes north there, does it narrow, right there where his arrow is? Right there, it narrows?
It simply ends. Are you talking about north of their driveway or north of Quail Hollow?
Well, it looks like about the middle of the church property, there's a reduction in width, right there.
Right there.
I think it looks that way because of what's behind the curb.
So, it's the same?
Should be a 33-foot street all the way to the end.
All the way to Quail Hollow?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it goes beyond Quail Hollow.
It goes just a little bit beyond Quail Hollow.
Okay, okay.
And what the church is interested in is the ability, if they ever wanted another driveway in behind, to come off of that, but they're not, they can't. They can't block this from being platted. Mr. Welsh could put this street right through here, it's on his property, the problem comes in paying for it.
So, implications for the future is if the church, at some points, decides to sell their land to the north or develop it, they would have to pull access, I guess, off of Brookwood for that.
That is correct.
Which is not how it shows in the master plan.
That's correct. And so, the, when we talked and received phone calls from residents in the area and they said, "Well, we thought Prairie Lane was supposed to be the through street or the primary street," that is correct. But again, we're only talking about 19-some, single-family lots, but we just wanted to make clear that the design of this subdivision is based on the inability to construct Prairie Lane in any kind of feasible manner. And if this parcel, this 40 acres, had not been split up, but it was, if Mr. Welsh had bought the entire piece and the church hadn't been able to get the piece in the middle, we wouldn't be having this conversation because we'd be dealing with one developer who would control it all. But it's the piecemealing of this parcel, which isn't under Mr. Welsh's control, that created this situation.
Which came first, the church or that subdivision?
The only reason the subdivision is there is so there could be a church. It's there to help pay for the infrastructure for the church. The church, the idea was to build the church there, there was no way that the church could afford to pay for all that infrastructure, so the housing was put in to help share the cost. And that was the other thing. John, if you could turn the utility layer back on? I wanted to point out that this is the big water line in Crawford, and it used to dead-end up here, but now, it would've dead-ended here. If you had this line coming up and this line serving the church, and this line had ever broke, the church would be out of water. So, what happened was that this line way up here was constructed all the way down Brookwood and all the way down here, tied back here and tied back here, so that the church could have both adequate flow and not be out of water.
This might be crazy, but the city spent money other ways than this, but can't you put the street through and the city pick up the half that the church would, and eventually, when that property's sold, tax it to those lots at that point? I mean, I know we're not in a business to build streets, but, well, a quarter of a million dollars, I don't know. Is that a fees, I mean?
Well, I mean, does Todd even want that? I mean, we might be speculating, I'm, he's not even interested in.
That's true.
Well, there is a concept of deferred special assessments, and the City Commission agreed to defer the assessments for water and sewer for the church. But it would be going quite a bit farther to say, because then you're asking the city taxpayers to pay for half of that street and carry that cost for a long, long period of time. But that is, that is just, I just simply wanted to point out why there is a state law that doesn't, that makes it not legal to split this up this way, but unfortunately, the enforcement is at the development stage, not at the transfer of property stage, and that makes it very challenging in a case like this.
How far does that law extend into the county? Does that extend, for example, to a 40-acre piece on the Celine Dickinson County line?
Yes.
Is 40 acres kinda the minimum?
Well, if you have a farm in Celine County, you can go in and sell off a piece to somebody to build a house, as long as you retain the remainder.
How big a piece can you sell off?
Minimum to build is three, right?
The minimum is three. You could obviously sell it anything greater than three. But that's called a subdivision exception, which the county administers all the time. But if you took that farm ground and you started selling it up to five or six different people, now you're in a subdivision. And what has happened here is that we've had a four-lot subdivision without a plat. And so, that's the challenging for planning it out.
Even if Prairie Lane were extended to Brookwood, there's, I don't see a way that a developer wouldn't have to still put in a street down the middle, unless the lots went all the way through. Am I not right on that?
You're saying to the right of Prairie Lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, I've only had conceptual conversations with the church, but what- What they have talked about is doing something like this, keeping this for themselves, selling this to somebody else for housing, and then, the way you develop that is bring, like, a cul-de-sac in here off of Brookwood and put houses around. That's the way you would have to develop that.
Yeah.
So, really Prairie Lane's probably going nowhere.
Well, what we wanted to do is explain, and it's part of the public hearing process, but when we sent letters out, all the phone calls that we got were from residents of Quail Hollow Drive, wondering why Prairie Lane was not being put through.
Well, that's hard when you buy a house and that's what you think is gonna happen. How many phone calls about, would you say, you had?
Well, no more than about seven.
Yeah, there's not, there's only so many residents there, and we didn't get a call from the pump station.
Yeah. You did tell them just to call their developer, didn't you? Say, "That sounds like a problem for the developer." What was his name?
Actually, they were told to call us, so.
Way to pass the buck.
Dustin has one, if you wanna share that, Dustin. You've got that?
Yeah, I did receive a phone call from Tiffany Benin, who has concerns about sidewalks. She has some children and they like to walk to the park, but because of the lack of standards that Crawford has, once you get east of the manor there, there's really no way to walk because there's just that big ditch, there's no sidewalks, and it's not curb and gutter there along Crawford. She was curious as to when sidewalks would be implemented and created in the area. And I told her that we really don't have a timeline for that, but that was a concern that she wanted to express at the meeting.
And I think just part of this whole process of approving them, didn't we talk about that, Mr. Stack, that that's gonna be the process? So, the sooner we get this through, the sooner she'll have curb and gutter and sidewalks, so, let's move on.
Well, for Crawford, though, I mean, it depends on development and how much happens and how, when it's warranted. So, I guess, whether these developments occur or not, it's still, it still could be quite a while before Crawford needs to be upgraded to some kinda three-lane or four-lane standard and with sidewalks, and it just takes a while.
Yeah, we're on zone, item number three, which is a change in zoning.
Right, but it is-
We've gotten off of getting into the platting process.
The reason we got into that was because this is a public hearing, these are people who called and could not attend the hearing and wanted those concerns expressed as part of the zoning application.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk to about it? We haven't heard from the developer yet on this zoning issue.
My plans were to wait to talk on the plating more so than the zoning.
From the commission, is there any question about the zoning issue? Are we ready to take action on zoning?
No, I think we're good.
We're good.
Let's move on.
Let's take action on the zoning issue, number three.
Our recommendation was to approve the R1 zoning request, subject to satisfactory plating of the property.
I make a motion to support that recommendation.
You'll second that?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, application number P09-3 filed by Todd Walsh, requesting approval of a preliminary plat for a proposed 21-lot residential subdivision to be known as Pheasant Ridge, Pheasant Ridge Edition Number Two. The subject property is a 7.26-acre tract of land located directly north of Pheasant Ridge Edition. Dean?
Well, we pointed out in our report that back in 1991, the Rowling Inc. purchased the southwest 11.5 acres of this 40 acres, and they submitted a plat only for the proposed Pheasant Ridge Edition, which you see there, has 18 single-family lots and a lot for the First Christian Church. The Prairie Lane provided access into the subdivision. When the Planning Commission was reviewing that plat, that initial plat, the issues that came up when the Planning Commission first reviewed it was the condition of Crawford Street east of Presbyterian Manor, which is a rural section that does not meet current city standards for an arterial street. There was an issue of dealing with the off-site drainage that was coming from the south and working out floodplain boundaries within the subdivision. And the biggest obstacle was that there was no ability to serve the subdivision with the gravity sewer system. And the other issue was the dead-end water line. And those were addressed in order, basically, the new concrete line channel was installed along the west side of the subdivision to carry runoff around instead of meandering through the property. There was a small sewer pump station built that pumped the sewer discharge over to Markley Road, and there was a off-site water line loop that came down Brookwood and the east side of Presbyterian Manor, and that created two sources of flow. And so, the conditions of approval that the Planning Commission imposed on that plat was that the developer and future property owners would be obligated not to protest a benefit district for Crawford Street that would upgrade that to city standards. Unfortunately, that was a covenant that, at the time, lasted for 10 years and we're past that period. And then, a drainage easement shall be obtained from Presbyterian Manor and recorded separately in the event that any portion of the proposed drainage ditch extends onto their property. And then, later, at that time, the 17 feet was added to lots on the north side of Quail Hollow Drive. And so, what has occurred is that the applicant has purchased what amounts to 7.26 acres north of Pheasant Ridge Edition and is proposing to turn that into a 22-lot subdivision. One of those 22 lots would be set aside as a detention basin or pond for this subdivision. And so, we did want to explain that the pond that's designed at the northwest corner, that pond is designed to handle the difference between runoff with this as an agricultural field versus runoff when rooftops and streets and sidewalks and driveways are constructed. So, that's to handle the onsite additional runoff. But what the plan did not address or at all was what happens to the concrete line channel that comes along the west side? Is it going to be extended, or is it gonna go in the rear yards, or all the water that's coming from south of Crawford, how is that gonna be addressed? The other comment that we had, because of the street names and the extension, the drawing we received called this Welsher Edition Number One. Our recommendation would be that it be referred to as Pheasant Ridge Edition Number Two, because it really is an extension of the existing subdivision. So our review of this consisted primarily of identifying that. And I don't know the CD, John. Were you of any luck getting those photos? And we might have. We have some photographs of that ditch. This is Crawford at the south. And it is going to the north. It starts to the east and then it comes back in this alignment and ends right here. And this is where the new subdivision starts here. So in our review of the preliminary plat, what we saw was a 20-foot utility easement in the backyards on the west side of Quail Hollow Drive. But there was no provision for addressing the off-site water. And I might just pause and let Mr. Nelson or Mr. Stack address our two components of any subdivision is the onsite-generated water, but also accounting for the off-site water that passes through.
Yeah, there's approximately 80 acres that runs from the south side of Crawford up through this area. And will have to be basically passed through somehow. They don't want to have to detain that on any portion of their property. They'll just have to deal with the internal drainage on their property and then do the detention requirements for that.
And the other thing that we have, we're still trying to sort out. But what Mr. Earls pointed out to us was that if you see that fence line over there, that fence is not on Presbyterian Manor's property line. That's on the inside of a 20-foot utility easement that runs through there. You can see the power pole there. That's inside the easement. Well, you get north of there and they have moved their fence line and placed the fence on the property line. You can barely see it in that picture. But here's the fence on the easement line. Here's the fence on the property line. So if you extended this straight, you would run into the fence line. And ideally, you would not want to have a fence inside a drainage channel because that's just going to be a catch for debris and other things like that. So the alternative, and we're certainly willing to discuss with Presbyterian Manor the ability to get a drainage easement there. But the alternative is then you put the ditch entirely in the backyard of the homes on the west side of Quail Hollow. And that could have some impacts. Those lots are pretty good depth. But that is why our recommendation on the preliminary plat side of this, you've got 120-foot lots. And if you eat up too much of the backyard for rear yard drainage, then you're going to eat into the buildable area. The other thing, and it's very difficult to detect on the plat, but that channel today, from here, the water kind of goes off this direction and meanders around. And so there's a swath of floodplain that goes right through from southwest to northeast through the subdivision. And what we did on the subdivision to the south was we corralled all the water in the ditch and then we were able to eliminate some of the floodplain that was going through the center of the subdivision. So our recommendation was that the zoning, the R1 zoning was certainly appropriate at this time to recommend for approval. But we think that dealing with the off-site water could have some impacts on the plat. And we don't think consideration of that is in order till that's looked at. And I don't, and Dan, did you have any? You did a little bit additional research on the off-site runoff. But there's quite an area south of Crawford where the runoff comes under Crawford and into this area. And so that simply can't end right there. Something has to be done to get that on up to the north where it ends up in East Dry Creek Tributary, where the cattle pond is to the north.
So you're saying their detention pond is simply not enough to?
Well, what they're doing is they're, in their pond, they're detaining the difference between what comes off a field today and what will come off when streets and driveways and homes are built. But that's just for their seven acres. They don't want to run all the water from off-site into their pond. They want to bypass it. And so if you look at the plat and the rear yard easements there on the lots on the west side of Quail Hollow Drive, they do not address how that extends. I don't know if you can get back to the plat or not, John. It's very faint, but this is the ditch and ends right here. And it's in this alignment. So if you continued it on, the ditch would come right up through here. And that's not addressed. The other thing, and it's very hard to see, is this is the floodplain boundary and the channel kind of comes off like this. This is all floodplain over here because the water's not confined here. It's coming over here and then going back. So. There would be some benefits to getting the water corralled to the west side of the lot and bypassing the subdivision. So we think some additional engineering analysis of off-site water and plans for passing it through the west side of the subdivision need to be done.
Any further questions of staff?
I have a point of clarification and probably answered by waiting to ask the question that we got to the preliminary plat discussion. But on the Prairie Lane road, it can, once this, if this plat is approved, it can never run straight north. There's no easement for it at this point. Is that right?
Correct, because the plan is that these are people's yards.
Right.
And so this is the street here. And if you build houses here in this configuration, you're not, unless, unless you swung it over like that. It's a slight possibility to swing it over that way. But we just, we wanted to make clear that, and Mr. Welsh has done a number of conceptual plans that were built around an extension of Prairie Lane. But when he realized he wasn't ever going to be able to control building it, at least from a fair perspective, he could plat it, pay for it 100% himself, but only benefit from one side. And that financially, that's not a very good decision.
Did Presbyterian Manor have to get a building permit for that fence?
They, the fence went up after that ditch was built. So they simply, they are in a perfectly legal location with their fence. It's, it is, we're.
For all of their fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions of Dean? Can we hear from the developer? Or his representative?
Pete Earls with Earls Engineering. The, we are looking at probably postponing this till we can figure this out with Presbyterian Manor. Obviously, we feel that ditch needs to stay on the property line. That's where it's flowing straight. That's where the direction is. It actually should go right on down that line. With 120-foot depth lots, we can certainly do a 15 or so-foot drainage easement through there. And if you look at that, keep that centered on the property line where it should be, that water does continue to flow to the north. And actually, if you look at the contours, the contours all, the high is in the, would be the southeast corner and the low be in the southwest corner. Or to the south, it's just off of the corner. So it makes sense just to continue it down that flow line. Yes, that ditch is going to have to be worked out with staff and myself and the developer. But just to try and swing it all over onto his property makes no sense and is not realistic.
Is that 20-foot utility easement where, is that that dashed line, guys?
That's correct. That's a 20-foot easement right now.
So basically, if that's a requirement of that easement, you're basically going to have to convince Presbyterian Manor to move that fence 20 foot to the left or to the west of that line?
That's correct.
So they're going to lose 40 foot of their property?
No, they'll lose, they really don't lose anything. But yeah, the fence would be moved 20 feet.
Well, 40. 20 to the easement, then 20 on the other side of the easement.
No, it would be to the easement line.
Oh, to the easement line?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So they don't have to go?
Then we would take additional easement on Mr. Welsh's property to allow that ditch to go straight down the property line.
Okay, okay.
So it would still split the property line like it does on the south.
Oh, okay. I just, I was maybe confused thinking you had to be 20 foot on the other. I thought maybe that was the actual easement area. You follow me? I thought maybe that was utility, that dashed line might have been a utility easement, that you had to be 20 feet on either side.
Oh, no, that is a utility easement right now. A lot of times, it's, the question is whether drainage just constitutes a utility.
Okay, okay.
That's another debate.
So you'd have a total width of 40 feet through there?
That's correct.
20 feet from the Welsh's property and 20 feet from Presbyterian Manor.
That's correct, if we can get it to work that way.
Would it be concrete?
The bottom of the ditch would be concrete, yes, the main flow line. Whether it needs to be like it is out there right now, that goes back to taking a look at how much flow we really have coming through there. There's a five-by-five box underneath Crawford Street. But it's also such that I don't think it's possible the water to ever get five foot deep because of the elevation of the land on the other side. But that's what we're going to take a look at, get with city staff and take a look at what kind of volume we actually have coming through there in various storm events and come up with that answer.
As you get to Brookwood Lane, does that ditch have a connection there to get it to the east? Or where, what kind of realignment do you have to do even north of your property line?
That's something we have not looked at yet. And that's something we need to get with staff and figure out. Okay, if we take this thing all the way north to Brookwood, where are we going to take it from there? Are we going to try and take it back to the west to that big pipes and so on that go underneath Brookwood, further to the west? Or basically now, just allow it to run through and look at how is it going to get to the main drainage swell further to the north, which is currently in that property?
Any questions of Mr. Earls? You had your hand up, sir. Come to the, would you come to the podium, please? Your name and address, please.
2657 Quail Hollow Drive, Leroy Prawley. My question is, what are you going to do with the water that runs down Prairie Lane? That comes from the church and the street? And I don't think a two-foot diameter pipe would contain it on a good rainstorm. When we bought the land, that water ran across our property. And basically Prairie Lane now serves as a drainage for the church's lot and the street. Where is that water going to go?
Good question. Yeah, good question. We've brought that up on the plat. And we'll have to work that out with Pete because there is considerable amount of water that runs down Prairie Lane as well that will have to be intercepted and taken somewhere.
It comes from the church and this Pheasant Ridge Edition Number One, right?
Correct.
So that'll all have to be worked out.
There is a considerable amount of water that comes down there when it rains.
It flows to the north?
Correct.
It flows on the east side of the property line and on the north side of property.
Okay.
In fact, there's a considerable ditch there that has developed in the last 12 years.
You're saying it comes here and then makes a bend like this? Are you saying it comes like this and then bends around?
And it comes around backside of our property.
There's a limestone retaining wall there? Is that put there for that reason?
We tried to keep it off our lot.
Understood, okay.
John, could you scroll so you could see the area farther north of Brookwood? If you, if you look at this, this is what happens after it meets this and comes here. Meanders over this way and then swings back. I guess if you kept scrolling, John, it would eventually get up. This is a channel here that goes up to the cattle pond. But this water comes across here today and meanders up and eventually gets into that channel.
So it'll have to be quite a bit of dirt work down north of this property in order to get that drainage under control.
Well, what Mr. Earls was referring to is one option is getting it up to Brookwood and then sending it straight west over to that channel as opposed to across the property.
Is that even possible?
Elevation-wise?
Yeah.
Honestly, I haven't looked at it to the answer I could.
Looks to me like it'd take quite a channel.
It seems to me that staff is recommending that the plat be further studied. And it seems to me, Mr. Earls representing Mr. Welsh, indicated they're willing to do that. And so I don't see any reason we shouldn't just support the staff recommendation and kind of let them work it out.
Absolutely.
Todd Welsh, 221 South Morris. And as I'm sitting here and looking at fences and property line disputes, it's one of those days you should have just said no when somebody said you want to buy a piece of property. But I'm here. I guess my thought process, and I agree with Mr. Kennedy on this of tabling it, my frustration comes from the developer outside of this development is it's, you pay this $1,000 and they have a month for everybody to look at this. And then I get this and I got three days to have my people do something. It just seems really interesting in the process that we have through this staff and everything that's going on is that they have a month to work on this and then now I have to spend money to go back in here. It's like we should have just delayed this another 30 days so we could rebuttal all the things that staff had recommendation in here. And I know these guys worked tremendously hard to put all this stuff together. But all of these things would have been great to have known for us to have two or three weeks to work on this, then to bring everybody through this whole thing and then let us say, you know what? Here were their concerns. Here's what we did. Here is our preliminary plat and we're ready to go forward. I'm going to have to spend, I don't know how many hours. I got to work with Pete again on this, take all of this stuff in. And I promise you, there'll be something else. And when we submit what we're going to submit again, we're going to have this packet four days before we come see you again. And it, I've been working on this for five years. And it just, it gets to the point where it's just really frustrating. So.
Well, I would say I think in fairness to them, they've got 30 days, but they're working on multiple projects, not just your projects. So that's, I mean, I understand. I understand your shortness too. But in fairness to their staff, I mean, it's, there's.
But I think.
Their feelings are you should already be kind of fully aware of the pitfalls of what's going on to a degree. I mean, obviously you knew drainage was going to be an issue and things like that. I mean, these people have had some drainage issues going on. So you probably knew that was coming. So not all of it should be a surprise to you.
Is a DRT, did you not have one on this?
I've had many DRTs and church meetings and people's living rooms and.
For the rest of us that aren't privy to that.
Yeah.
Secret code word.
A development review team meeting where we all get in the same room and talk about these things ahead of time. And I haven't been in on one, but maybe there's been some in the past. I don't know.
We've had church meetings multiple times.
Meetings are different than DRT.
Probably.
It's the same, everybody who would be at a DRT was at the church. So that it was a DRT meeting at a location devised for everybody who could be there.
Except for Presbyterian Manor.
Point out one more thing, that at least the planning staff is at least five days ahead of the mailing that Mr. Dent got from the city commission.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
I needed that, thanks. Good laugh. That was just my comments on there. It just is, I just would like, I just want to know, the next time I come up here, what do I need? And that's really what I'm just saying from everyone there is, what is a line item that I need that the next time I come here? I don't learn about fences. I don't learn about drainage problems coming through there. I would have rather have had staff call me and say, look, you're not ready for this preliminary plat. We're going to table this and go forward because we've had seven letters, we've had four phone calls, we've got more drains, we've got fence lines. It just seems that we've all been here a long time and it's going to go to a table and what I'm going to see in three weeks.
My concern, again, in fairness to them, and Todd, you know, I usually am on the side of the developer on that. But I. My, my concern, again, in fairness to them, and Todd, you know, I usually am on the side of the developer on that, but, but I, I still have to protect them too. I think what they're, probably their concern is, is that they, they get ahold and say, Todd, you know, we're running some issues, we should probably table it. There's another personality type, maybe not yours, but another person might say, darn it, they keep tabling my thing, I just wanna get before the planning commission. If I could just get before the planning commission, we'd be okay.
Point well taken.
So, I, I, I think that's a concern too, so, hey, we want you to start building too, yeah. We don't wanna see you again, you're starting to look like Tim House into us.
Wow, I'll leave on that.
Normally, we would not put this on your agenda, because it's not ready to be on your agenda. It shouldn't be on your agenda, however, be, because the rezoning hearing was scheduled and because the rezoning and the plat were so intertwined with each other, this was put on your agenda. But in the normal course of, of business, this, this was not, um, put on your agenda. I guess that my other, which I guess we'll, we'll go back and look at that timeframe, but just so you know, we, we do what we call a staff technical review, we get input from the engineers, utilities, and also we work and coordinate that with Westar and Kansas Gas Service. And so what we did was when we identified, um, those issues, we prepared a letter and sent it to Mr. Welch and Mr. Earls, um, well ahead of preparing this staff report, and it says, um, we've completed our preliminary review and we've identified the following, uh, issues, and we have these observations, the drainage study does not appear to address off-site flow entering your property from the south. It's not clear from the study where your pond would discharge to. There's no drainage easement shown on the west side of the subdivision adjacent to Presbyterian Manor. Um, the drainage easement in Pheasant Ridge addition to the south is 25 feet wide, and at a minimum, an easement of this width would need to be provided on your west row of lots to allow the existing channel to be extended north. Channelization of this drainage course would allow for the elimination of the floodplain areas going through the middle of your subdivision. That, that was the review letter that was sent out before-
What's the date of that?
The date on that was March 27th. Which admittedly does not allow much time, but you have to, you have to have the, um, the reviewing agencies like Westar and Kansas Gas and others have to have time to review that and submit it into their, and so it only works if the submittal is perfect. But if, if you were doing this, ideally it would not be on your agenda at all, because it's not ready for it.
What do we need to do today, Dean?
Well, our recommendation would be to postpone consideration of the preliminary plat to allow that off-site drainage issue to be addressed.
Need to be made in motion, in the form of a motion?
Yes, it should be in the form of a motion.
I'll make a motion that we postpone application Z, I'm sorry, PO 7-6.
Second. No, it's PO, no, it's 9-3, isn't it?
We had PO 9-3.
I stand corrected, PO 9-3.
Still second.
Yes, it is PO 9-3.
Okay.
Thanks, Rod.
It's been moved in the second, we postpone to a future date, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, eight zero. Okay, that was four. Number five, application number Z 09-3. Does that have the same number? Filed by Todd Welch requesting a zone, change in zoning district, classification from, uh, Saline County Agricultural to, uh, R1, uh, single-family residential and PC-2 planned neighborhood shopping on a 10.97 acre tract of land located at the northwest corner of Crawford Street and Holmes Road. Staff report, please.
This is the piece of property that's on the other side of the, the island that the church owns there, and so this has frontage on, on both Crawford and Holmes Road. The request here is to rezone basically the northern two-thirds or northern portion to R1 single-family and to set aside the corner, which would be the northwest corner of Holmes and Crawford, for a little over three acres of, of C2 or planned C2, um, zoning to allow for future neighborhood commercial. And so we've summarized for you on page two and on page three, the intent and purpose of the C2 district, and it is designed to permit areas of convenient shopping, facilities of no less than one acre located to serve one or more residential neighborhoods. Some examples of permitted uses would be beauty shops, dry cleaners, gift shops, medical offices, business and professional offices. Um, those would be some examples of that, so it's, it's designed far, primarily for businesses that would serve a neighborhood and not for community, uh, retail or businesses, and, um, there are some uses that are allowed on a conditional basis. Again, this is a piece of property that's bisected by a ridge line, south of that, drainage is south and east towards Crawford. Uh, north of that, it, it drains to the northwest. The contiguous development is the First Christian Church on the east. Um, you're familiar with the Wheat Hills addition planned for the east, and now that that is planned, it appears that you can now get sewer service from this property east of Holmes Road over to the interceptor. So with that in place, that does make this a suitable area for new housing development with limited commercial on the corner. So we're, we're basically looking at, at 7.8 acres of single-family and the remainder, the about three-plus acres as, um, the, the commercial area. This would create a pocket of commercial zoning that would be isolated from other commercial zoned areas, but as we mentioned, if you look at land use plans dating all the way back to 1989, they discouraged, stripped commercial along Crawford and recommended that commercial zoning be limited to Marymount, Crawford, and Holmes and Crawford. So this would be consistent with that, would also be consistent with the East Salina Master Plan that shows limited office or, or neighborhood commercial at the corner. We pointed out the 20-inch line in Crawford that deadens, there's also an 8-inch line in Brookwood. Those would have to be extended and, and looped together via Holmes Road. The plan for sewer service is to collect it and take it east through the Wheatland Hills addition over to the interceptor. Again, for, we don't have the issue of off-site runoff here like we did on the other side, and so the, the plan is to create a detention basin that deals with the additional runoff generated from development of this site. There would be some runoff that would still go back to the southeast. Obviously, this is in a good position for response from fire station number four, so we're, we're talking about 19 building lots, and a 19-lot subdivision would generate about 190 vehicle trips today on Holmes Road, which is today a gravel road. Certainly, commercial development would add to that traffic, and the future design of Holmes Road is an important issue which will be addressed more in detail in, in the plat report. But on the single-family portion, the density we're looking at's about two and a half units per acre. It would be consistent with, um, the East Salina Master Plan, which shows that area as, as townhomes or medium-density residential and, uh, commercial at a neighborhood scale at the corner. So from that standpoint, I think the only, I think we have at your place is up there the list of permitted uses in the C2 district, and those would include antique shops, apparel stores, art galleries, banks, barber shops, beauty shops, bike shops, bookstores, business and professional offices, camera shops, churches, dry cleaners, florists, a very small food store that would not include a large grocery store, because there's a limit on building size, um, gift shops, daycare centers, dental, medical clinics, funeral homes, optical shops, pharmacies, laundromats, shoe repair, tailor shops. So the only issue would be if, if you look at this as a planned C2 where a final site plan would come back for your review, then the, um, only question would be, are there any uses in that C2 list that would not be appropriate that might be considered for, um, elimination or deletion from the district? But we wanted you to have the, the full list of uses there, so you can see what, what C2, um, would entail. But if it's a planned C2, then what that means is you have the ability to eliminate uses, and it also means that when there is a plan for commercial, that that site plan would come back to you to look at how it would relate back to the remaining neighborhood. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions about the zoning application.
Any questions of Dean or of the staff?
I have one question, um, the, because I see us here a little bit where we were with Mr. Dent's discussion, in that it does deviate a little bit, uh, when we're talking about single-family residential versus townhomes, which is part of this East Salina Master Plan. Is that a concern to staff, that change?
It's, it's not a concern, just as it, what, what it means is, just as we discussed in Mr. Dent's application, it doesn't mean that you have to have that use, it means that if, if, if you were going to propose any commercial, it ought to be at the corner, not somewhere else, and if you were going to look at areas for, for townhomes, it should be closer down to, to Crawford, work, working its way back, but that doesn't mean that that's the only use that could be considered. A single-family would still be, uh, consistent with that, because it's less intense than the townhomes.
Thank you.
Uh, two things, on the aerial view, would you show, uh, where the commercial property line would be?
Should be even with the church.
Okay.
I just made it even.
Okay, okay. And, and in C2 neighborhood shopping, does it include, um, service station, gas station?
Not as a permitted use.
Okay. It doesn't look like under conditional uses either. Which would seem to me to be a logical thing there, because it's a long ways to another-
Quick shop would disagree.
Well, that's, no, that's true, that's, I forget.
I, I mean, I agree, but, yeah.
Any further questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, uh, anyone in the audience wanna speak to this issue of change in zoning? If not, uh, I would imagine Mr. Welch doesn't have much to say, because this is a change in zoning and then we'll get to the replating. Any further questions on rezoning?
No.
Are we ready for action?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that we approve application Z 09-3 with the staff's recommendation that the rezoning request be subject to satisfactory plating of the property.
Second.
Heard the motion, the second, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, eight zero. Number six, application number P 09-4 filed by Todd Welch requesting approval of a preliminary plat of proposed subdivision containing 19 residential lots and one commercial lot. The subject property is a 10-acre, 10.97 acre tract of land between, uh, Pheasant Ridge Edition and Holmes Road. Uh, staff report, please.
And we're talking about the 10.97 acres that abut Holmes Road on the west side, and, uh, the preliminary plat that you have in front of you is it for a 20-lot subdivision. A lot in the northeast corner is set aside for stormwater detention, um, resulting in 19 proposed building lots, 18 of which would be for single-family homes, and then the larger lot set aside down at the corner. The reason this is on your agenda, it's just to get, you're, you're, you're setting a bit of a precedent, and we've had the discussions in the, in the first place. If, if, as Mr. Dent observed, that the, uh, the master plan is a pretty picture, but not practical, um, and it does require working with and coordinating with a number of owners. The approach that Mr. Welch and his design engineer took was that, um, the, not, not to get involved with working with the owner to the north and some of the other complications with that proposed alignment, so there, there does need to be a conscious decision made or recommendation made that the, uh, the alignment on the master plan is, is conceptual only, and if, if this, um, alignment is approved, then we're going to have a, a straight north-south Holmes Road and a straight east-west, um, Brookwood, and this, this concept is gonna be abandoned. The, the other aspect of that would be to get some feedback from you, and we'll, we'll let Mr. Stack address the, the complete street concept, but we have Mr. Earls working for Mr. Dent, who's developing plans for the east side of Holmes. We have Mr. Earls working for Mr. Welch, who's working on the west side, and he will be doing most of the design for the internal parts of their infrastructure, but, but Holmes Road is going to be a, um, it's unimproved completely right now, and, uh, one question would be, is this a, an impact street enough that you believe that the city with input from planning commission and city commission should be the one designing, um, Holmes Road north? And is, is there any special vision that you have beyond improving it to a two-lane road? And so those, those are the options, is that you have the designer for the subdivision developers design it as a paved street, or is it significant enough that the city should take the lead on that? And then the second part of that is, is there any, uh, vision that the planning commission has that, that Holmes Road would be something over and above, whether it's a parkway or, or not? And we, we bring that up again, because, um, we're still operating under the current plan, but the new comprehensive plan talks about two things, it talks about complete streets, and Mr. Stack can, um, expand on that, and then it also talks about impact streets, which are some of our ma, major arterials, and what it talks about in the way of impact streets is, is perhaps additional things related to landscaping or streetscapes or things that would make that a more attractive entryway into that part of the city. So, um, we think our, our job is to review plans first and foremost for conformance with the, the East Salina Master Plan, and, and this alignment, we just want to inform you that, that does not match that, so it, it would be a deviation, and that would mean Brookwood's gonna be straight and Holmes is gonna be straight, and then we'll look at Glen in the future, and then the other part of this, and I'll let Mr. Stack expand on, on what a complete street means in terms of, of designing the street in its entirety.
Okay, complete streets, based on, um, what the new not-adopted comprehensive plan, to be clear, the, the things they're looking at are all of our arterials and minor arterials, Holmes being one of those. Would look at definitely having, um, some kind of pedestrian amenities along them, possible bike lanes, uh, bike trails, looking at transit, automobiles, basically complete travel of all people, basically. So let's just explain a little bit what that is. Now, what does that look like on Holmes? Now, we're still, still pretty early in the, in the process to, to think about that, whether it'll be a three-lane or a four- or a four-lane section, and whether it'll have a median or not. Those are all questions that'll have to get answered later. But just to give you an idea what some of the thoughts are on a complete street. Now, like Mr. Householder said, whether or not the comp plan is even used, I mean, it hasn't been adopted yet, so that's just some of the ideas so far.
What is the rationale for why it was developed to look like this?
The rationale for that was, at the time, to have a, we want to call it a signature neighborhood, a signature development, that had features that no area of Salina currently had. The other rationale was, basically, for drainage, is that... This, their rationale was, Holmes is going to have to be completely rebuilt anyway. You can't use existing roads for any purpose for a city public street. They looked at the drainage contour, the ridge line runs just like this. And the concept was to build the street on top of the ridge line, and everything on the west side would drain back to that lake or pond. Everything on the east side would drain back. And they looked at it, again, it's conceptual and theoret... But that, they were dealing with a blank slate, and if you were going to try to maximize the number of homes on the west side of Holmes that would have access to that park, that you would move the street and make it follow the ridge line. That was the rationale. And it's...
I got a question.
Sure.
Starting at Crawford and going north, the first one is Darvin's Land, correct?
Yes.
And then to Turks?
The Turks.
And then who's above that?
Jerry Eck has the Christmas Tree Farm.
Does he know that this development is in his future?
Yes, there have been many, many meetings.
And then who's above Jerry Eck?
It's Delmas Jackson.
And then, and so he knows about this?
Yes.
And then the guy to the left?
The guy to the left, who instigated all this, the veneers.
Okay.
And they own all of that?
And they own... The veneers own where the pond is and the...
They did own it. They sold it to Overland Ventures.
So, one entity owns all that.
One entity owns everything on the other side.
So, basically, we're sitting here, got to figure out what four or five property owners are going to want to do in the next 20 years. Am I...
That's the idea behind master planning.
But they've been informed in all...
Yes, there have been numerous, numerous meetings with them. Yeah, it doesn't mean that they...
They agreed with it, but they've been informed.
Okay, yeah.
And, again, the concept was that no, nobody, no one property owner with our 10 and 7, and divided up pieces of property, could afford to pay for all the engineering, design work, that would have to figure out all the drainage issues, and all the complicated sewer and water issues, to get all the sewage discharge back to the east, because that's... Everything is dependent. The people on the west have to get across the property to the east to get to the interceptor. The people on the east can't get water unless they work with that. And the other idea was that, instead of having a whole bunch of individual detention basins, that you would have a master drainage plan, and all the detention would be in that pond that you see on the plan.
And this looks great. I mean, but here's Todd down here trying to get this developed, and then there's a whole bunch more. Is that, I mean, at what point in time?
Well, the reason that we're...
Have we planned for that?
The reason that we're here, and the reason that these are on your agenda, is that it's possible to do this south part without implicating all this more complicated stuff to the north. And so, by looping the water line in Brookwood and Crawford, that puts off... Eventually, there's going to be a water line that'll have to be put up homes, all the way to Country Club Road. And so, those property owners can't do anything today, but it is possible to do something at the south end, and loop the water in Brookwood, and get access over to the interceptor east of Dry Creek. And it could be that these pond sites that are on Mr. Welch's property, long-term, if we came up with a regional drainage solution, and got channels that got water up there to the new pond, that those ponds on his property could be eliminated and turned into building lots. But they're the interim drainage solution, but for the rest. As I said, our job is to review the proposals that come forward for consistency with this plan. Your job is to consider how important you think this plan is, or how realistic it is.
How much would Mr. Welch lose of his property, developable land, if the Holmes Road took that curve through his property there?
He would lose the detention basin, and probably parts of maybe two other lots to the south of that, at least one.
So, if he does this plan, like we have the curve, then where does his water go?
His water?
Right. Where does his detention pond go?
Well, under this plan, nobody would have detention ponds, but that would require... The idea, and the biggest player in all this, is Overland Ventures, which owns property to the north. And the choices are, is to make everybody wait until that, the big piece there in the middle, or something happens there, or to do it in increments. And it's not really destroying or damaging the bulk of this plan if Brookwood and Holmes don't get done as shown on this plan.
Right.
But our job is to put it in front of you and say, this is a conscious change to that, and if this is done this way, that's not happening. So...
I mean, worst-case scenario, they curve it...
After, yeah.
Right.
After Brookwood.
Yeah, we can't hold Todd up waiting for these guys to decide what they want to do.
Right. Part of this is based on, with the way the pond and everything's laid in there, where Glen does not come straight east. It has to come down and miss the pond.
Sweet. No, Todd will have to forgive me, but I'm not clear on where we fit in with the comprehensive master plan. There's a beauty to comprehensive master planning. Whether we agree with it individually or not, it does outline a growth development for the city. And as we start to make minor exceptions to the plan, then those minor exceptions soon add up to a major exception of the plan. Now, maybe the plan's wrong, the comprehensive master plan's wrong, maybe that road doesn't need to be curved. I wasn't here when the many, many committees probably studied it, and looked at it, and endorsed it. But it's hard for me to say, well, just in an hour's meeting here, and a little reading this weekend, that we should just allow an exception, one at a time, to each of the master plan's comprehensive proposals. And I'm just saying that, for what it's worth.
Yeah, one...
I agree with you, Ken. I think as planning commissioners that have been here for a while, I think we all struggle with that at some point. But as a practical matter, you know, basically, we have a gentleman that's willing to develop this. And I think personally, I agree with Rod, that maybe Holmes Road could go up there and curve a little bit more in towards that roundabout. And that's actually my question for Mr. Stack. Have you looked at this closely? Is that a feasible option here, do you think?
Yeah, I think it's feasible, yeah. It's... That roundabout, I mean, that's a fairly advanced concept for this area, I mean, for sure, so...
I love him personally, I don't...
Yeah.
Well, I love the concept, and it hasn't been done in Salina. And it would only enhance both of your properties if, in fact, the end result looks like this, I would think.
This is, I don't... Highbrow might be too strong, but it was just, it was an effort because of the multitude of individual detention ponds that people didn't like, and because all of the individual pump stations that are built because there's no master plan for how an area's going to be served, and we end up with little pump stations that nobody wants. The idea was, let's paint a big picture, and how all the pieces can fit together. It's your job to look at, is this really realistic and practical? Our job's to say, this is what it is, is say, this is a filter or lens that the Planning Commission's supposed to review proposals through, and you get to judge how practical... I don't believe that moving Holmes Road or Brookwood slightly is that major a deviation from the plan. It's not precluding anything from happening farther north, and that's why this is all in front of you. But, again, our job's to say, this is the plan for this area, this was a concept for how the streets was done. This plan calls for a straight east Brookwood, and a straight north Holmes, and if this... If this is just wishful and not realistic or practical, then nobody should be held to that. But it just has to go through that conscious decision before that moves forward.
Who is Overland Ventures?
Overland Ventures is a group out of Overland Park that developed the reserves at Prairie Glen Apartments across from Jerry Ivy Park.
So, is it Brett Johnson?
It is Brett Johnson, yes. Who is a Salina native.
Do we have any indication from them as to what their intention with this property is?
Yes. It's to do something very similar as to what's on this plan. But not... Obviously, they can't build Holmes Road like that without working with and the consent of those owners.
Right. Well, I understand that.
... open end without having the water go somewhere.
Well, he can use his detention pond.
Yes.
But if he curves the road, then he loses the...
Right.
... detention pond, which pushes it over into that.
That is correct. Everything touches. This plan that you have there does not work unless you were looking at a plan for Overland Ventures' property at the same time you're looking at this plan.
Do we have any kind of indication from them that that's coming anytime soon?
No.
Well, Todd got here first.
That is correct.
That's the way it is. This is business. I mean, if they want to...
I can't... No, I agree.
I mean, it's a great plan, and let's keep in mind, we keep coming back to comprehensive plan. Let's not forget what drives most comprehensive plans. Let's just say what it is. It's special interests. It's not really what's best for the people of Salina. We think it is, but those people who go to those meetings, like I said, routing Ninth Street to Santa Fe, you can't tell me that that is better traffic flow. That's special interest at work. And Overland Ventures and everybody else has special interest in this, and doing what's best for their pocketbooks. So, let's not be a party to that. Let's do what's best for the developers as they come along. Todd is here first. Let's move him down the road. These guys can come later and make their plan fit with Todd's. I don't think we should hold him up based on what they want to do later. Tough luck.
I have another question, and this is maybe for Dean or Mr. Stack, regarding the length of the street and the diameter of the cul-de-sac. Are those appropriate for fire apparatus?
Yes.
Do we have...
I mean, the cul-de-sac proposed in this is very, very short because of the loop that you have from Brookwood, and then over to Holmes.
That's right. I forgot.
So, if you look at the side street coming over to Holmes, which would... You can't tell it clearly. This is very faint, but this is a street coming out of Mr. Dent's proposed layout. So, these two would match up, and I apologize that that is still faint. Thank you.
What's the right-of-way for Holmes Road?
It is proposed on both sides, is 50 feet from center line, for a total of 100 feet.
Would that be enough for both a, what do you call it, an impact street and a complete street?
Yeah, it gets tighter if you start talking medians and bike lanes, and... But realistically, that's a long ways out there for this being a high-volume thoroughfare. So, 100 feet, I mean, we can... That's something we're supposed to look at. I mean, as far as building this, as far as building this, who's going to build Holmes Road? We have to look at that.
I guess I don't see it as a, what you'd call a high-volume street.
Right, exactly.
Kind of medium volume, or something like that, so...
Well, we didn't think Marymount would be a high-volume street either.
Really isn't.
Well, I mean, you plan for the future, and things are moving... Eventually, this will probably be a high-volume street, but that's eventually, and who knows what that is.
Yeah, this one does not connect to the interstate, Ohio and Ninth do, so we just feel like it's definitely a rung-down. Simpson is possibly the more bigger road in this area, so we don't see Holmes being the, you know, the biggest street in this area.
I don't see a median in it.
Right. The median's a real question. I mean, that really throws off the right-of-way.
Is this one going to come back to us if we approve it?
This is a preliminary plat. What we were suggesting, and the point, the point is well-taken about redesign or additional design. If there was reluctance to approve a straight Brookwood and straight Holmes, then they would be looking at doing some additional design work. What the action would be today is to say, you approve of the straight alignment of those two streets, and then we would turn this around. We have one question about the discharge coming out of that pond, but then we would turn this around at your next meeting for preliminary plat action. But we didn't want to presume what that was going to be, so this is in front of you to basically, one, endorse the straight alignment as opposed to the curvature on the plan, and then, secondly, to get some feedback from you to say, yes, Holmes Road is an impact, significant street, and we think the city should be in charge of designing what it consists of. Those are the two items we would like your direction on. Then we would work through the remaining details and get this back in front of you at your next meeting for actual preliminary plat action. But, again, if you're... All the design work and everything they're doing is going to be in reliance on these being straight. So, that's why this is in front of you today, so that everybody can have confidence in moving forward with that plan in mind.
I have one more question. Is this a good time to indicate our expectation on sidewalks, or is that on the final?
That's part of the complete street, but what is further there is, do you have sidewalks on one side and a 10-foot bike path instead of a sidewalk on the other?
I'm sorry, I'm talking about in the development itself.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that, it would not be premature to discuss that. We haven't gotten that far, because we were focusing on the street alignment, but our take on that would be that the north-south street would have sidewalks on both sides, down to the intersection of the east-west stub street, that it would have sidewalks on both sides, and that the... Then those would tie in with a sidewalk system on Holmes Road. That by current code, the section of the cul-de-sac, starting with the Deer Run and extending south, would not have sidewalks required. Because that portion from Deer Run south is a cul-de-sac.
Okay, are we ready to take some action?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I, on case number P-09-4, will go, I would... I'm getting tired. I'd move that we accept the staff's request.
And that would be to approve the alignment as proposed?
Approve the alignment as proposed.
Do we need to mention that we want the city to plan Holmes Road if that's of our interest?
If it is of interest to you, that we have control over the design of Holmes Road, that would be important, that we would be in charge of that.
Are you adding that to your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Todd, maybe before I second, I just want to make sure if Todd has a problem with that, then I'd second that.
Okay. Okay, do you all understand the motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight, zero. Are we making progress?
We're getting there.
So, we gave you one, Todd. We gave you one.
Okay, number seven. Application number CU-09-1 filed, doing business as Gerald Squires, doing business as DFR Metals, requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of an auto salvage yard in an I-2 light industrial district. The subject property is located north of State Street. The subject property is located north of State Street and west of Cherry Street in blocks four and five of the Glen Grove addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and is currently addressed as 1500 West State Street. Staff report, please.
Well, we gave you quite a bit of background about city commission's strategic plan and their shared vision statement, the concern about the appearance of gateways and entryways into the community, which came out again in discussions about the update to the comprehensive plan. But we have not had any case like this before, and we have not had a case that has come before you since a series of text amendments were adopted in 2007. But what we have is an existing, which was functioned more as a, I'll call it a Volkswagen graveyard on West State Street that was operated by Mr. Wooster, and it was established in the county and then came into the city, basically grandfathered in as is. In 2006, Bone Farm and Ranch, which is doing business as BFR Metals, purchased the property. They did some clearing, removed trees. They put up a metal panel fence around a portion of the property. They got a little too ambitious and put fence beyond what was the boundary of the salvage yard, and they had purchased some property from Lonnie Wilson, and also later purchased four vacant lots from Randy Sterrett, which were on the west side of Cherry Street. And they went ahead and extended their fence across a portion of that property, even though they weren't authorized to conduct salvage activities there. Shortly thereafter, they introduced a car crushing operation to the site as part of their salvage business. So the reason this is in front of you is that there is a state and local license. Do you think you could go to the other one, John? It's a little clearer. There is a state and local license for this property right here. There is not a license, either at the state or local level, to expand operations into this area. And so the request that's before you is an application for approval of a conditional use permit, which can have appropriate conditions attached to allow this to expand into that area to the east. And so your role this evening is to look at the applicant's proposed change in use from vacant lot to expanded salvage yard, see whether you think that would be compatible with the surrounding area, and then to review the plan submitted by the applicant to see if it complies with the newly adopted standards. And just to go over those briefly, the annex, the indication is the minimum area for an expansion, or I'll call it an annexation to the existing salvage yard, is that it can be as little as 20,000 square feet if it abuts an existing operation. This does abut an existing operation, but there's over two acres of ground included in this. The boundaries are to be clearly established, either by fencing or readily identifiable means such as monuments or posts. No operation can be within 500 feet of an established residential district, and the premises where the operation is conducted shall be enclosed, except for entrances and exits by a non-transparent fence, wall, or berm at least eight feet tall. And that's where we're going to need some assistance from you as we put these standards into application. Also, no screening fence or wall may be located within a required front yard setback area along a public street or highway. No front yard storage is involved is allowed. In other words, don't put up a fence or wall and then store stuff outside of it between the fence or wall and the street. Crushing operations are involved and allowed, but the material's not supposed to be stored or stacked above the height of the fence, and there needs to be driving aisles or fire lanes provided as determined by the fire marshal. And then within the yard, we need an area that can be maintained through crushed stone, gravel, other material to be a driving or maneuvering area for fire trucks, emergency vehicles. So if they go in there, they're not going to get stuck up to their axles in mud. And the idea is that these would apply to any new location or expanded location after the effective date of the ordinance, which was 2007. So when we focus in on those things, we did not, we've, I think I've been working with Mr. Bone for these past two and a half years, and getting a real detailed site or operational plan has not been easy. But our main issues tonight are getting an agreed-upon screening and fencing plan, getting some information about the location and design of the gate along Cherry Street, and then getting a plan for providing an all-weather fire lane access drive through the expansion area to all the proposed gates, and then clarifying the status of Cherry Street. There is correspondence, two owners there that basically say that from this driveway north, Cherry Street is not open to traffic. It's not surfaced. It's not improved. And Cherry Street, the improved street ends here, and this is basically an unimproved, unopened. Well, they're looking at having access up here through a gate, so that's going to involve our engineering and public works departments to see what's necessary to do minimal improvements to Cherry Street to at least make it passable for traffic. So what we have is a gate here, I guess the gate's over on this other side, a gate here. There's an access easement that they have through Mr. Wilson's property to a gate here, and they're proposing to add a gate there. And then we did our best to try to come up. Do you have that concept planned, John? So we have gates here, here, and proposed here. We have a fence that starts here that's six feet tall. They got ahead of themselves and built a fence across, I believe, to here that is six feet tall. By the way the code reads, this fence should have stopped here, and that this section would be six feet, or this would be eight feet tall. This section would be eight feet tall. Let's see. Well, we're lost in translation here, but this line here should be probably about here. You take Cherry Street and you take the 25-foot setback to here, which lines up with Mr. Young's buildings, that's where their fence can be. And then the other question is, the old code used to have an exemption for fencing along railroads with the idea that salvage yards would receive or ship products or materials by rail, and you shouldn't have a fence there. There's an abandoned rail line there, but it's not in service, and it doesn't really have anything to do with the operation. So the questions are, can we, will the planning commission accept a six-foot fence here that was already pre-installed, even though the code would say it needs to be eight feet tall, with the understanding that we would have an eight-foot tall fence on the 25-foot setback line here? And the other issue would be, should a gate and vehicle entrance be allowed on Cherry? And then finally, is it necessary to construct a fence when it says that the idea is to close the yard? The applicant has some concerns about being required to have a fence there, and the argument being that the railroad is elevated there and already constitutes a berm, perhaps within the meaning of the code. So we had hoped for and did our best, and will continue to refine that, so that the choices were to have discussion and try to develop a agreed-upon plan at this hearing, or you could say, come back to us when you have a detailed plan that we can review and respond to. We did our best to try to take conversations and discussions we've had with the applicant and translate it into this, but the primary issues are three. Accepting the six-foot fence that was installed along the south boundary that if, by all rights, should have been eight feet. If a gate should be allowed on the Cherry Street side. And thirdly, whether a enclosure fence should be required along the north boundary adjacent to the railroad. So those would be the three primary issues. The applicant had indicated that, and we'll follow this down, it's a staff administrative item, not something for the commission. I checked with the fire department, and eventually they would have to go out and approve whatever kind of all-weather surface got put in to that area, but it is going, whether or not they're allowed to have a gate at the Cherry Street side would impact how they do their internal alignment as well. So if you could go back to the aerial photo, John, I'll try to go over these same things. But there's a fence that comes up like this. It comes over to here, it's six feet tall. They're going to have to do a fence here, eight feet tall, fence coming over here, stop it at the building setback line, which is about this line of these buildings, bring the fence up to the north property line. The question is, do they need to fence this, or is this berm sufficient? Should they be allowed to have, and you can kind of see on this aerial where Cherry Street peters out, should they be allowed to have a vehicular gate here? They're going to have circulation this way, but they would have to build some kind of roadway over to here. So we've had one. We've had one correspondence on this since the public hearing was advertised, and that was from Mr. Young, who has the cabinet shop to the south. And Dustin, would you like to share that with them?
Yeah, Mr. Young came to us, and his major concern was the current status or standard in which Cherry Street has been developed to. Right now, it's primarily a gravel street. It doesn't meet the city standards for most streets, and his concern is having large trucks go up and down Cherry Street and the effect it may have for the rest of the property owners who use and depend on Cherry Street to get to their properties. So he would, in his mind, he would request that the applicant not be allowed to have access on Cherry Street, but other than that, he is in support of the project as a whole. He just doesn't want the access on Cherry Street.
Where's he located on Cherry Street, 2027?
He has a cabinetry business that he operates right here, and he owns this piece of property here.
Maybe I don't understand this, or I'm, what I'm reading through the lines and would, am seriously considering a motion to table this, is that it seems to me of an abuse of staff's time and energy here. If you've been working with this owner for several years, and we still don't have these things listed here, I don't know why we should take up our time, and I don't know how much more of your time you should take up until the owner is serious about complying with what we say the standards need to be.
Well, I think Mr. Squires, who's the operator there on behalf of BFR Metals, has been making good faith efforts. He's been meeting with staff and those type of things. It's just simply, we would literally have to, and we met yesterday and we discussed some of these things, but literally, I think that we'd have to sit down and just develop that plan and put it to paper. Because we're not, we're, timing-wise and things like that, we're not always on the same page as what needs to occur, but so...
So would we give, why would we do a conditional use permit now, authorize that, until we know what the design, what they're, what they see this as, how they see this as being used in the future?
Well, I think those are the choices. We have, again, a concept, but not detail of, I've asked for some details about if there is a gate on Cherry, what would it consist of, and those type of things. So we have done a lot of the heavy lifting on this, trying to gradually bring this into compliance, and this is part of that. And this, the sketch there was rushed and not of probably sufficient detail of what you would want to have in terms of what's going to be metal panels and what's going to be masonry block, what the gate would consist of, how wide the gate would be, where exactly it would be located in relation to Mr. Young's property, and those things. I think if we were given to the meeting the 21st, we could come up with something that was a little more detailed for that. But those are the things to at least think about, is how important is having a fence on the north boundary, and what's your initial impressions of using Cherry Street as a vehicular in-and-out access, but...
So that would be helpful for you to know at this point to proceed?
Right.
Rather than just tabling it completely. You would like to know how we feel about those issues now?
I think so.
Tell me, I mean, you could still, it'd still be appropriate to say, come back the next meeting with a very specific step-by-step, this is how we're going to deal with the north, the west, this piece here. Show us again in more detail what's existing, but if you say, no way we would support having gated vehicle access on Cherry Street, that's going to be very important for that. That becomes a continuous screening wall, not a gate.
And that's important for them to know and for us to know. It's also important for public works to know, is, are they going to need to be out there doing some work on Cherry to make it more passable?
And that's my question, is that a city street, I mean, street in the city road, so to speak? It is city-maintained?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, I know I use that word loosely, too, maintained.
That is a city right-of-way.
That could be a better word, yeah.
If you go out there and look at it, the gravel surface really ends about right there, and this is not, it's not surfaced.
But again, that's all city, all the way up to the railroad tracks.
A street right-of-way, all the way to the track.
And the tracks are abandoned, you said?
Yes.
So that is reverted back to some ownership?
Railroad's still owned, but the track is not used.
I think one question we will have for Mr. Squires is going to be, what sort of traffic flow does he expect at a Cherry? If it's just an extra fire entrance, or if it's, you know, a rare occasion, I personally don't see a problem with it. But if it's going to be a main road, I think, even though there's only a few houses there, I think those residents have a right to live on a quiet street. But if it's not going to be a main in-and-out road, I would be somewhat supportive of that, of that interest myself. I have no problem with the six-foot fence along Lonnie Wilson's land. It's not like that area looks great anyway. I may... I, I may have an exception where I would want an eight-foot fence still across the back, because it's not a railroad anymore. It is abandoned. Eventually, that could be, who knows? I've seen towns turn abandoned railroads into nature walks, things like that. We don't know what down the future is, and if the state law says eight, eight-foot screen fence, then we need to stick with that on that part of it. But that might be a compromise. We make them, you know, we allow them to keep the six-foot, but they need to put eight-foot on the backside. You know, maybe that starts narrowing it down at some issues that we could, I mean, I know it's an expense, but that's not, it's abandoned. That's gonna turn into something else. We can't just assume that it's gonna be an abandoned railroad for the rest of its life.
Well, you can't see it from the picture, but north, north of that is old, the, the south line is State Street, north of it is Old Highway 40, and there are some sightlines through from the, from the north as well.
That you can see.
So, so we looked at it from that standpoint also.
You see, you see very little from Old, Old Highway 40.
Those people coming out of strip joint don't wanna look at a bunch of junky old cars, do they? Come on, that's not really fair.
I agree. I'd like to hear Mr. Squires' take on why the Cherry Street entrance would be important.
Bureau Squires, two oh five Irene. Our biggest concern on the Cherry Street gate, well, there's two. One, so we could get out with trucks, which last year, we did one time.
Okay.
This year, we haven't been in that, on that street. And there's a fire plug right at the top corner on this side.
Yeah.
How's the fire truck gonna get in there?
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be a fire entrance.
I've already done all my other homework. Mr. Andrews got an email from the fire department, whoever he talked to said I hadn't been there, but I was there about two weeks ago, and he's already approved everything I've done. I mean, as far as what I need to do to land, to hold up the fire trucks and...
We have a gate there.
So, you're, you're saying that up until this point, only one time have you driven down Cherry Street to access...
We used that, we used that Cherry Street a year ago when we crushed cars, and that was the exit we used to get out, was go down Cherry Street.
Because I was, I was there this morning...
We come in the middle, we had cars over here where it's painted green, we come down the middle between Lonnie Wilson's and loaded about in the middle of that, and then turned, and that's how we left, was on Cherry Street.
Well, 'cause I was there this morning and, and drove up Cherry Street, right at that point where I'm assuming, 'cause it's open there, there is some kind of, isn't there some kind of a fence there? And then it's, there's an open space?
There's a, some kind of fence along the north boundary of Mr. Young's property.
They did that, redid that today, 'cause I didn't have the 25-foot setback. So, they redone the front today, and it's out of concrete.
But, but there was...
Right. We were, we were having a conversation, and I realized that some fencing was going up, and I asked, do you understand it needs to be on the setback line, not the property line? And they did not understand that, so they were, were moving it back to the 25-foot setback line, probably from the property line.
But you were scooping a smashed car this morning, right there at that point?
Just to block the gate. That's all it was for.
Okay.
How much traffic do you anticipate? I mean, obviously, that was, that once a year was one thing, but now you're crushing cars, how often?
No, no, we're not crushing.
Oh, you're not?
Well, because metals are down.
Ah, well, when you, let's say it goes back up, yeah.
Okay. That'd be the only time we'd use it, is if we wanted to leave that way.
Uh-huh. How often do you anticipate that, honestly?
I can hold enough cars out there for at least a year.
So, I mean, are you, seriously, are you talking to moving, moving down that road two, three times a year?
Probably not that many.
Oh, well, it's not even an issue.
Maybe twice.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not even, yeah. I thought we were talking like 50 trucks a day or something here.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no.
And at the, across the street from that, there's a lot there that somebody wants to build on, so he's gonna have to have a street.
Sure.
You understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And I just found that out today.
Yeah.
So, if it's once a year, why is it important to have a gate there?
Well, first of all, because of fire trucks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's a fire hydrant right there on the corner of that. That's the last thing on the street.
Dean pointed with the fire hydrant, or possibly...
Yeah, good question.
I'll show you where it is.
I'm not sure it was...
He, yeah, say, Mr. Squires might have a better idea.
Give us an idea.
Okay.
And where would the gate be?
So, really, we're looking more of a...
The next fire hydrant is...
Yeah, so we're looking at a fire issue, yeah, yeah.
It makes it easy for us to get out.
Sure.
But it's also a fire issue.
Yeah, if you're talk, I, I think if you're talking even once a month, you're, that's not, that's not enough use to, hell, a semi-truck could get lost and drive down there more often than that, you know? It's like, oh, I thought this was Broadway.
At the other end of the street, or there's a truck repair shop across the street, too. So, their semis go there every day, so...
Yeah. That's a non-issue for me. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about that.
What's the extent of your operations here? Do you do crushing, and then haul them off?
I buy cars, buy metals. We don't sell parts. All we do is crush cars there. I store them, then we smash them.
You don't grind them up or anything, right?
No, we have to haul them to a grinder.
You bring in a crusher on occasion?
We already have, we have two crushers. We have one there right now.
You do have one?
We have two of them.
You have two of them? But you don't need to haul out more than once or twice a year? Or do you haul out through...
When you smash them, you can put about five of them in a stack, and they're roughly five and a half foot, maybe six feet tall. And you know, that's a big place, you can put a lot of stacks there. You can put probably 3,000 cars there.
Do you, with those cars that you haul out, then, on a, what, monthly basis?
No, no, no. We, we've only crushed twice since we've been there. We're getting ready to crush again, because I have cars that's in the back on that yellow corner up there. I have some, I have some cars right here, that's over this line, so we're gonna, I got cars out there, and I've got three or four cars up there, that's all I have right now. We're gonna crush the ones up north, and the reason they're sitting there is because we're filling the north end, because it's a water hole, and it always has been. There's, I mean, I'm trying to just fix the drain, it's the one that had to flood. There was water there for a year. And there's no, I mean, there's nowhere for it to go, 'cause it comes in under a railroad bridge and...
I noticed broken concrete and stuff, and it looked like a hole.
Yes.
Is that a hole for debris of that nature?
That's just, that's what we're using to fill in with, so we can put dirt on it and gravel on top of that.
Dean, is there still some funding available? I'm just curious. I mean, I, I know a couple of years ago, something came up where they were, the state was providing some funding to help wrap some of these, these salvage yards and things. Do you know, is that, is there something out there to help sort of offset their cost, maybe? I mean, we, we all want it to be cleaned up and look as good as possible, but we understand...
I'm not aware of anything, but that would be, this is regulated at the state level by this Department of Transportation to a degree, and then we have our local licensing for salvage yards as well.
You might, I, I mean, I know it's your business, but you might look into that.
Last I knew of that they done was at Heath on Old Forty.
Was there, yeah.
That's the, that's the last one I knew that they done.
Well, it's not, not, doesn't hurt to look into it, just wanted to suggest it for you, maybe save you some dollars, but...
Do you know where the last inhabited house is on Cherry? Because there's a, there's a...
I'm gonna tell you the truth.
Building that's...
Yeah, there's buildings down there, but I don't know what's the last house is.
There's a building close to that cabinet shop, but it looks uninhabited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it seems to me like that light-covered, colored roof that's about halfway up there is maybe the last...
And that could be. I mean, I go, I was there today, I go down that road a lot myself, but, I mean, I don't, I guess I never pay no attention.
So, you go down that road and turn in there?
No, I go down that road and make sure nobody else has been there. 'Cause that's why, I, I have it blocked, and that's the only way I can tell if people's been in there, there's tracks down there.
Okay.
Dean, I have, I have a couple of things I wanna mention here. One is, it appears to me on the surface, we have a non-compliant fence already, after two and a half years, in your own words, of working with this operation. It appears to me on the surface, we have non-compliant dumping, because I think some of the cars that are in that area are on the other side of the yellow line, and you don't have the permit for that yet, apparently, 'cause that's what we're looking at. And I'm not sure, we're 500 feet from a residence, which I believe you said was the state law. Whether it's inhabited or not, it's still a residence.
Well, it's not a, it's a residential district, and there, there is no residential district. Even though there might be leftover houses, it's all zoned industrial, so we're not...
So, they're set.
We're not talking about any residential zoned areas.
The only thing I can say about the fence, I'm not trying to pass the buck, when I put the fence down going north, I already had the people hired, I already had the property bought, I went east with it to the alleyway, and the reason I did that, 'cause I had the people there, and when I done that, the rule was six-foot. And now the rule's changed, and, I mean, if I have to change, I change, but...
No, that's, I think that's fair, if it was six-foot when you...
You know, I done that, I done, it's something I just done in the last week or two. That's been a long time.
I understand, and, and I didn't know the rule had changed about the height of the fence.
Yes, Dean.
But the fence has, in some places, is blown down, and I assume we're to keep that up and maintain.
Yes. The fence is, and there's a piece out there, they're supposed to fix it today, that blew down. It blew down last week, and it just ripped a hunk out of it.
And then additionally, there, there is a gate there that, that has two cars as the gate on it right now, sitting there.
Yes, and that's because...
So, I assume we already have a gate there, we just use cars as the gate, as opposed to...
No, I just keep that to block it while we're putting the block in. We couldn't get any more blocks, and one of them wasn't here there. I just got more block today. We're getting to Smoky Valley. I was already supposed to have had it all, and they just didn't have it. So, they went out today and moved that, and I got all the rest I had, and I haven't been there today, or since this morning, so... And then it's a, it's a 30-foot gate, is what I left there.
Yeah.
Dan, if, there, this is a gate, and he says it's primarily for fire trucks, you'd have to make some improvements on that end of Cherry Street to service the fire trucks, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I mean, especially, is, the whole thing's gravel now? I mean, the road is...
Well, it's not, in the very north piece, it's not gravel.
It's not gravel.
It's not gravel, okay.
We'd have to extend the gravel surface.
It's just plain old dirt.
It's not even gravel. So, this is one we inherited, Dean, from county, probably? Just thinking, we normally don't have gravel.
It was grandfathered in.
Grandfathered, okay. 'Cause, I mean, usually, you try to build the road when you plant it.
Yeah, the road was, the road was from county, 'cause Dry Creek used to be the, the boundary.
The line, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
For, for some reason, we went out there in the early 70s and annexed this property.
Well, Dean, what do you want from us?
Well, what we'd like, if we're, if, if your goal is to have something less, less conceptual, and have a, a plan that has specific heights and locations and gates and things in a little more detail, and then proposals for what happens on the east, and along, the options for putting something on the north side, I think, basically, if there's a, if there's a, I know, I don't know how we limit its use, but if there's a majority of the commission that says, we're willing to consider a vehicle gate on Cherry Street, that will help us develop the plan, then we'll show you the location of the gate, what it'll consist of. What we're talking about is probably some sort of metal cattel panels with a mesh fabric screen. That's what we've been working on with some of the other operators, 'cause if you get into a gate that's solid, first of all, it's very heavy and difficult to move. Second of all, as we've experienced this last couple of weeks with these winds, it's tough to get a solid fence to stay standing with that, that kinda wind. And so, we're looking at using the, the mesh fabrics for the gates that obscure screening, but keep it lighter.
Sure.
Okay, let's take the Cherry Street gate. Do you wanna do a motion and vote, or consensus?
You wanna just do a consensus, or raise a hand, or how many people would...
I think it should be there for fire...
Fire, if nothing else, I agree.
Are we in, agreed on that?
If, if the city is willing to spend the money to...
Well, they've gotta do something with Cherry Street to serve a fire truck, I think.
Now, what do we do about that, Dean? I mean, do...
The city's a bad landlord, it's deferred maintenance.
Get a dump truck and put some gravel in it, and drive out there and start spreading.
Okay, all right.
You know, this...
We can do that. I was just wondering if we gotta...
Talk about a place that needs a TIF district, my gosh.
Asphalt that comes off of grinding operating, milling.
Some millings, all right.
It'd work great there.
Let's think what we could've done to Cherry Street with that $3 million we gave Kohl's.
I would think the fire department, if they have an outlet there, would wanna be able to get to that.
Yeah, you'd think so.
We'll, we'll also make that part of the plan.
Does it work?
To my knowledge, that if there's a hydrant that far north, it's not hooked up to anything, 'cause there's, there's, there's...
Oh, it is new?
All brand-new. There was no water west of State Street, and that, they went north, and they went west. No fire hydrants out there at all. The closest one used to be at State and Broadway, by that liquor store.
Is that hydrant working as far as you know?
I don't, I don't have any idea. I mean, it's brand-new.
Well, it should be working.
That doesn't mean...
Dan, I'll check into that.
Yeah.
Check into it.
Don't open it up. Don't, yeah, don't, yeah.
There was a line that came across Ash, parallel, and then south on Cherry, but where he was just...
I saw it there.
Anything that showed any water up here, so I don't know why we'd have a hydrant.
Yeah.
There's a hydrant somewhere in this location, and we have a hydrant out here.
Well, there's a hydrant up north there. I saw it yesterday.
Yeah, is there?
We'll, we'll confirm whether it's hooked up.
Yeah, we've, we've been missing some hydrants, I wonder if that's where it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's where it ended up.
Okay, we've settled this, Cherry Street gate.
So, what we will, we'll do on the 21st, we will bring back you a more detailed plan with all of those things, and especially the details on the gate.
Okay. Next issue was the eight-foot fence across the back on the north side.
I feel like it should be there, simply because that rail line is abandoned, and we never know what could be there. Like I said, I know that walking area around Boulder, not that I'm a big walking path guy, but, but I know that they took, converted their old rail lines into walking paths. So, we don't always know that that's gonna be there. If it was still a rail line, I might say, eh, not as important, but it's not anymore. And that could be, you know, the rail may turn that back over to the previous landowner, it could be open. And I think you still can see that from, from Old Forty, not that it's our most scenic road into town, but we need to do our best to clean up our entrances to town, and I think if you can see any of it from Old Forty, we should have it blocked.
But I would like...
I agree.
I would like them to look at plantings as an alternative, because those metal fences that are there now are not attractive.
Plantaroy evergreens, it's cheap.
So, if that's an alternative that makes sense, then they, we should at least look at that.
I would agree with that.
I think that's a great idea, and that would, cedar trees grow fast.
Well, I know, but...
They're ugly, too, but...
Then they get diseased, and then they...
Well, then you're not worried about your wind blowing them down.
Yeah.
Okay, we've taken care of that issue. I think we're in agreement on that.
I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused here in that, and I'm a lot, I'm confused most of the time.
Yeah.
But, but the plan in front of us, that we studied before we came here, was a conditional use permit to allow expansion of an auto salvage yard into I-2 Light Industrial District. Am I wrong? Is that what we're acting on? And yet, we're taking this a piece at a time, acting on things that I've not really...
Well, this is all being done on the assumption that you think this is a appropriate location to expand into, and then it's a question of what, the, the way this is structured is that if the use is permitted, you have a wide degree of latitude as to what conditions to put on it to make sure that it, it's not a negative impact on what's around it or gateways to the community. So, everybody kind of jumped past the question of whether the, the salvage yard expansion should be allowed at all, but tho, those discussion points, you're, you're not voting to approve it. What we're trying to do is work, get your guidance, so we can sit down with the applicant, put all the things in people's minds onto a plan to scale, to detail in writing, and put all the things in people's minds onto a plan to scale, to detail in writing and part of what, part of what has occurred out here, and it, it hasn't always been in bad faith, but when I'm on the phone talking to Mr. Bohm and he's describing to me on the phone where he's putting up a fence, I said, wouldn't it be better if you brought a plan in and drew it up and showed us so we could tell you that's a good place for the fence? But that's kind of the way it's, it's gone.
And that's my point exactly. I'm not prepared to sit here and say we should use milling chips for the road or this type of fencing for the screening. I'm, I'm prepared to say until there's something in front of us that shows us a attractive business that can be located in that area, I'm not thinking we approve this.
Right, right. And we're not. Nobody's asking to or just trying to say, should, should I spend a lot of time with the applicant working on the design for the gate on Cherry Street if, if you would just rule that out right now? Because we're not going to spend any time on it if you wouldn't even consider having a gate on Cherry.
Yeah, I think we're setting up the parameters so he can draw that, so we can approve it later.
So what we're.
I think we're going on the assumption that we'll probably approve it.
And that, and that's an assumption I'm not going on because I'm not.
Well, you're going to put up a five star hotel there at the end of Cherry Street or?
Well, I don't know, but until you see a plan, I don't know if it can, if, if I could vote in favor of it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, so it's hard for me to.
That, that's the purpose of getting the detailed plan so you know what you're voting on.
Yeah.
That's right. And I defer to the city's expertise on the plan.
We're not voting on it, we're just getting ideas.
Well, let's go with the ideas and then we'll, we'll vote later.
The, the motion should be to postpone consideration to allow a detailed plan to be brought back to you.
Right.
With the guidelines that we.
With the guidelines we set forward.
And we'll, we'll identify on there how it complies or does not comply.
And so if they're not willing to do what we think looks nice here and complies with state and local regulations, then we may turn down their request for.
Conditional, conditional use permit, yes. Have we covered the issues that?
Yes, that, that will allow us to, we'll get Mr. Squires in, we'll sit down, we'll, we'll put it into a formal two-scale plan that, that is sufficiently detailed and, and match that up. And then hopefully, again, that, that plan can be followed by his people to use in the field to carry it out and for future inspections.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we postpone the decision on application C-09, CU-09-01 until further plans can be worked out by the applicant and the planning department.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Does, do they have to prove to us or give us any indication of need here? I mean, this is a huge space and it's pretty much empty now. So is that part of that?
I think part of the, would be that the space, the shaded in blue there is not sufficient in size. That die was somewhat cast a few years ago when the additional land was purchased and the fence was put up. And basically what we've been doing is telling them, you may have put the fence up, you may have bought it, but you don't have approval to operate there. And so now, now we're at this point where they've made the decision that they wish to try to use that area for part of their operations.
Which is what they've been doing all along.
But yes, that, what is the need for the expand, it's because they need more area